...August nineteenth at six thirty and we do have a quorum and the agenda was properly posted. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four is public appearances, public's opportunity to speak on any subject that is not a specific agenda item. Folks that's logged in here are all have a specific agenda item they would like to cover or weigh in on. Item five is discuss and consider the meeting minutes from August fifth. Any edits, corrections, discussion from board? Motion is second to approve. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carries. All right, to make things interesting, I'd like to move the plan commission up for discussion now since we have a number of folks in the meeting. If you'd like to hear about that, if that's okay with the rest of the board. And then I'll just have to remember to go back to item six. At least I'll keep my ass in that one. All right. So the plan commission met on August fourteenth, covered a number of items there. They were all approved. But we'll go through them one by one. There are, some of the developers actually are here, but they want us to just touch base on anything you want to cover. We'll start with the first one, which is discuss and consider requests from Homburg Equipment for approval of a preliminary plat for West Lawn Estates, fifth addition. If you would like to enter for the rest of the...
I'm still old school if there's a... I've got a lot of glasses on and off here, I'm sorry.
Can I have a little glass to the other?
Yeah.
Now I'll give...
Probably have the best one to do this.
I'm exposing my... Okay, sir. Thanks for your time this evening to give consideration to our request for moving into the fifth addition to West Lawn Estates. I think I'd like to start with just an overview and look at the neighborhood plan for the Northwest Corridor neighborhoods that we've been developing for the last decade in Village Cottage Grove. Certainly planning has been going on for that long. Hard construction for roughly five years in Fourth Avenue, West Lawn. A whole lot of work prior to that in terms of getting to the point we're at today. Twenty sixteen, we had amendment to the urban service area approved by a CARPSY that brought two hundred and twenty acres, the entirety of this region, into the urban service area of Village Cottage Grove. Twenty seventeen, after lengthy negotiations with the township, ourselves and the village, we were able to achieve the extension of water main from the new stand pipe down at the intersection of N and the interstate. I think it was five miles, something like that. But a significant endeavor, significant cost. And that twelve-inch water main presently runs through the Damascus Trail Corridor to the northern limits of the Fourth Avenue, West Lawn Estates neighborhood and is now providing a high-pressure water system that's making the development of roughly, I'm sorry, this much of Fourth Avenue, the entirety of the Northwest Corridor, as well as the new elementary school site possible. A lot of time, money, effort, and negotiation in getting that to happen. Twenty eighteen into early twenty nineteen, we annexed the entirety of that acre gen. There have been a number of different master plans through this process. I know one of the talking points for this evening is Damascus Trail. I guess I'd like to just say upfront that that has been the master plan in the north-south corridor from Gaston Road to Biels Road, as long as I can remember. It's seventy-foot wide in that corridor for a collector's street in Village Cottage Grove. It was a primary north-south street. I wish they had two roads coming up out of Fourth Avenue, but that's not what we were given when we acquired this property from Meridian seven years ago, Fourth Avenue. We had one road up the east side of the middle school site that ended a couple hundred feet short. We actually have the property line down in this proximity because they couldn't figure out how to get across the coal refinery gas pipeline. That was one of the challenges we've had to hurdle in giving that. The plat has progressed as expected. It's been measured. It's been successful by all accounts. I did some math today and pulled up the one-one-nineteen tax rule and we have in excess of twenty-eight and a half million dollars in value sitting in the Fourth Avenue, West Lawn. Projecting out the last seventeen home sites will get up to thirty-five million, I think, for the total built-out value of Fourth Avenue. The next hundred lots that we're asking for approval to move into, I see no reason we can't be north of forty million for added value to the community and provide home sites in another great neighborhood to bring a lot of really nice folks to this community. You know, there's a lot of people that want to come here and we'd like to continue to be the place that they want to land. Near-term history, once the annexation is completed, we began in earnest going through the committee-level process in the village. You guys have a lot of committees. I'm sorry you have to serve on so many of them. So I think a number of you have seen this a number of times. I think tonight make makes number ten. Plus, we held a neighborhood meeting with the township. We held a neighborhood meeting with whomever chose to attend back in early June and it was well-attended. The room was full. I would say eighty percent of the folks were from the township. We talked, we listened, we had a good dialogue for a couple of hours. One of the big takeaways from that meeting was those folks did not want these three connections made on Nightingale and on Metal Arc and Thrush. It was predominant in their concerns. The overall plan calls for street connections north to Gaston Road and west down to London to Bus Road. Bus Road is identified as a hundred-foot wide. I don't know what's beyond Collector, but major Collector Street that again would run from Gaston down to Biels Road in its completion. And in those conversations with the subcommittees, we've been before a couple of times, utilities a couple of times, public works a couple of times, planning a couple of times, now we're here. And I think many in this body have seen the master planning documentation for the Northwest Neighborhoods. In that process, we heard, I asked a question. Do you want us to drive north to Gaston? Do you want us to drive west to Bus? I can go either direction. The response from public works, utilities, parks was, we'd like to see you move west to Bus Road. Speak directly into the microphone?
Microphone, this one's just not working for some reason.
Okay. We're open to suggestion. If the board feels differently than what the subcommittees felt, I'll say the same thing to you guys that I said to them, is we can push in either direction. There was a lot of impetus for going west for two reasons. From an engineering perspective, so we could make connections to the school district's property, which sits right here. I have it colored in in white because I'm not entirely clear what's going to be there, but I think you guys have had some conversations with the district about what they're going to build and when they're going to build it, and I think those are ongoing. By planning this much at this point, it allows us some flexibility where we connect to the school's property in terms of where we'll put our north-south road. And I'll tell the same, again, I'll say the same thing that I said to planning and to utilities and public works is we'll put that north-south street wherever you want it. We'll line up with what they give us. If it's along that eastern edge as they've proposed, then that's where we'll go. If it moves from there and you guys want something differently, we'll do that as well. The plat is a hundred single-family home sites. It's in the core of the neighborhood and it's extension of the Fourth Avenue, West Lawn. I have some sites that will be more affordable sites and I anticipate marketing and pushing those areas within the plat for some degree of affordability better than where we're at right now. Obviously with roughly seventy home sites accruing twenty-eight million dollars in value, these are not inexpensive projects. We're adding a lot of value, one at a time, to the community. I work almost exclusively with independent custom builders, for those of you that are unaware of that. It's the niche that we like to work in, is high-quality custom construction. This is not slamming out twenty houses on a block, once a year, you know, per tract builder kind of development. I think anyone that's driven up there knows that. We changed the location of the park after the initial design and, you know, the cute little phrase I like to use, I guess, is, maybe it's not cute, but I believe we made lemonade out of lemons. I think it's a better plan. I think the park is located in a better spot. It's very centrally located within the entirety of the neighborhood, including the context of the school district. I'm sure all of you remember, we used to have a about nine-hundred-foot frontage here along Damascus Eight, Nine Hundred, and then a dog legged over and went like that. I'm sorry, it went like that. We began our subterranean exploration at fancy word for bore pits, on the east edge and worked our way west. Things got worse as we moved from east to west. The rock got shallower. We've been dancing around limestone formations in the Village Cottage Grove for seventy, or twenty-seven years, seven years. There's limestone out here, there's sandstone out here. It rose as we went west into this ridgeline. I suspect that formation has something to do with the location of the school at the southern edge of their property, but I don't know that. They've talked about using the northern portion of their land for athletic facilities and again, I think I think it ties really well with this park moving west and being right up in line with this. We're going to be literally two hundred feet away from the northern edge of whatever it is they choose to build and we'll put a street down there and sidewalks or whatever to connect our path to connect or maybe all three. But it does allow us a little time. I know there's some residents in West Lawn that are upset about parks and they sent a few emails that were too glowing in their report card for me. But we've worked real hard to build this system and I got out my old-fashioned green highlighter to show the system and network that is in Fourth Avenue, West Lawn. Everything that's colored green is built and is dedicated to the Village Cottage Grove and available to put improvements into. We paid a lot of money in parkland fees in lieu of dedication. We paid a lot of park improvement fees. The residents that live there have paid a park improvement fee as an impact fee associated with their building permit and there's been monies collected. It's nobody's fault. It takes time to build things. To go from the southeast corner of this plat to the northwest corner of that plat took us five years. If I could turn a dial and turn up the market share, I'd be thrilled to do that. I could probably go to a different concept and start selling to the tract builders, but I don't really want to lean into that. But it does take a little time and patience. I think by shifting this over slightly, and I'd like to point out that we're three hundred and thirty feet away from the corner of that twenty-plus acre park. My brother Chris and I, it's Chris in the back row there, are really excited about being able to build a community park here. We did it before in North Lawn and there's twenty-five acres there plus a sixty-acre conservation area. I know you're not supposed to use that word about Thaden property, but it is there. And, you know, there's eighty-five acres of land in that neighborhood, with twenty-five being dedicated specifically to the village and/or the school district. Seven and a half, I think, went to the district. This gives us an opportunity to do something bigger and better. Having over twenty acres of contiguous land in the core of this neighborhood gives us a chance to really step back, do some long-term planning. Sean and the folks at the Parks Committee wanted to take a little bit of time and a breath and look at this, you know, from our corner right here where our path ends, all the way up through Fourth Avenue, and then also in the context of the greater neighborhood, and think and talk and, you know, talk to the residents about what it is they want. Because at one of the meetings I attended, you know, there was a faction that wanted soccer fields and another that wanted a swimming pool and a third that wanted something different. You know, so it's, there's always going to be some different opinions, but it gives us a little time to figure out what it is that we want to build up there. In the meantime, and I said that before, I've said this before the emails were sent, I think it doubles down our commitment between the neighborhood and ourselves and the village to accelerate the planning for the one-acre park, for the half-acre pocket park adjacent to North Pond, for the quadrant that surrounds the middle ponds and for the third of an acre and that sits by the infiltration basin and the path system that connects them. I think we should accelerate hard into that planning and budgeting and building. And frankly, I think some of it could happen this year yet. You know, it might be something as simple as a bench and a tree and a patio adjacent to one of the ponds where people can sit down on their walk up the path. And it doesn't have to be complicated, but right now, there's nothing, other than the space, the land, the grass. The one-acre parks aren't grass yet. I've been squeezed into the corner, you know. One of the reasons I'd very much like to see an affirmative action this evening on Fifth Avenue is that we need to get moving on it. And a couple of different factors during twenty eighteen pushed us into a corner. I'm out of product. There's nothing to sell. Building permits are down. I think these gentlemen pointed that out at one of their hearings when I was reading their minutes. We ran out because I let a couple of things slow me up and I hesitated and waited to, you know, kumbaya the thing and it didn't work. So here we are. There's half a dozen lots unbuilt, thirteen in total that aren't finished in construction and three that are owned by builders that could be sold to individuals if they wanted to contract with that person. That's the place we're in. Our desire is to move rapidly into the construction of the first phase of this plat. I wished that somehow that first phase would string out a road all the way to one of our primaries, Gaston or Bus, but it can't. You know, the scope of that is really overwhelming. We have to start right here at this intersection, technically right there at the end of Damascus after it's run its thirteen-hundred feet through here and move from that. We'll drive west per the direction that we were given by the subcommittees, unless the board wants something different. That's open to discussion. I think engineering perspective was that the looping of utility infrastructure as well as the path up the west side of, or I'm sorry, the east side of Bus Road, once it's completed through the intersection of Bus and Cottage Grove Road, after it comes through the frontage of Shady Grove. It's a lot of groves. I think that was the desire to loop the water main, bring sanitary up that corridor and get the path connections made. It felt like there was more to drive towards to the west than there was to the north, I guess in a nutshell. We're real excited to keep doing this. We've been doing this in the village for a long time. I think our reputation and our experience and our actions speak for it. I don't think in any situation there's going to be a few folks that are unhappy with things. We've always done our best and will continue to, if you grant us the ability to keep doing it.
Andrew?
Yes?
I actually have not, have not been to any one of those other ten.
Okay.
Can you just orient me to the map? So is the lower portion, the current Fourth Avenue?
Yes, so this forty-one acres is the current subdivision, the fourth addition to West Lawn Estates. Eighty-four home sites, very much similar to the fifth addition.
And then the fifth, the addition that we're talking about tonight that we have the plat for is what's outlined in the yellow highlighted?
Outlined in the yellow, correct. And the green is available park facility and open space facility within that greater neighborhood because I didn't have it highlighted for Wednesday night's meeting. I don't think it displayed very well. So I wanted to point out that there's two-point-one acre park called Ravenwood Park that's adjacent to our multipurpose outlot that will be dedicated in the village. Our intention was to build a path connection through that outlot over to this park because, you know, nobody's guarding anyone going to parks. Township residents can come down to Dublin, the village residents can go up to Ravenwood. There's infrastructure in place already. It's not that there's no parks and when you look at it, you can go DCI map or something, Dublin's here, Ravenwood's here, the one-acre lot is here and it kind of forms a triangle within this existing neighborhood where anybody has a walking distance, maybe fifteen hundred, two thousand feet to an existing park. Once our lot ten is fully built, and I should explain, we're moving dirt and machines off it right now. What I meant by being squeezed into the corner is, as we move from north to west through here, we've, you know, the tide has pushed northerly and westerly. And we have had traffic up Damascus. It's the only way in and out. It was what we were given. I don't have connectivity to the west through the district's property. It was planned for that, but it's not going to be that now because they bought it instead of someone else or ourselves. My planning called for Morning Dove to Dogleg and hook up with Lane Street. Pheasant Run to turn and go south and hook up with Fundamental? Fundamental Way to the south and Red Hawk to extend either in or turn and go north or maybe across intersection there. That was a plan. It no longer is. I can't control that. We built the two roadstones to the east, hoping that we'd be able to negotiate a permit with the town of Cottage Grove to fill in the last twenty to thirty feet. If you look closely at your maps, I guess it's not showing on Fourth Avenue, but here and here, it's twenty-five, thirty feet short. There's trees there. It's not unlike where you see Nightingale short, Metal Arc short and Thrush short. Absent a permit from the township to infill that infrastructure, I can't do a thing. I can't go across the line, take down the trees, you know, subgrade, put in pavement, ditch, extend the path or the sidewalks, none of that. I'd like to, you know, the response when we asked five years ago was, sure, as long as you build new streets all the way down to Sandpipe or at full village standard, we'll issue a permit. But I can't build twenty-two-hundred-foot a street at village standard for free. This isn't that profitable to do that. Given that experience and the response from the neighborhood meeting that we held and the overwhelming response from the township, we decided not to make those connections at Metal Arc and Nightingale. Thrush geometrically is almost impossible. I never gave that any due consideration at all because it just, geometry doesn't work. And there is some engineering limitations on the other two as well. Nightingale, from this corner to our high plant here, we have seventy feet of relief. The grade on Nightingale extended would approach, I believe we calculated ten percent grade, which is severe. The steepest road ever built in the village is North Lawn Drive at six percent. It's easy to look at X and Y and say this has to happen and that has to happen, but when you start to add the vertical element and look at Z, it suddenly becomes more challenging. The premise of extending Nightingale all the way to Damascus is even worse than just getting up to Wellington. One of the things we did do in response to the neighborhood meeting is we modified the plan to allow for a connection of a path at the terminus of Metal Arc South. And it came from one of the neighbors that are adjacent to us and they said, hey, how about the kids that are walking towards school? You know, they're going to have to cut between people's houses. Why don't you put another path there? So we tightened this up, took some footage out of the lots and provided a twenty-foot outlot there that would contain an eight-foot wide asphalt path. And I guess that's a somewhat minor point, but I'd like to touch on it. One of the angry emails is from a resident that didn't like a path adjacent to their property. And I did it as easements in Fourth Avenue and I'm not doing that again because it provides mud and water. What we're doing from here forward is outlots with a path within it. The outlots dedicated, given to the village. We construct the improvements in full authority and control and the decision-making over what happens in terms of plowing that. Because that's what really brought the ire was the fact that I stopped plowing it. Then winter last year, it was my machine rule. I didn't have the option of continuing to do it as a favor. It was never an obligation for us to do it. I did it for the neighborhood to be nice. And then it kind of slapped me back. But these are all now designed as outlots. They're twenty feet wide. It provides enough room for grading and it sets the houses back further off of it. Because the other thing the easement did that did not work was that I had to wait until houses were built to put that path in so that we could fit it to the vertical element. I've got enough space now to breathe and we can put them in and get the houses in later. So the path connections are made out front. Long answer to one question.
It was helpful, thank you. So those green areas, not Ravenwood, but the two that are with the yellow highlighted area, those are, is Parch?
No. This outlot, this is about two acres. One point seven. It changed between concept and preliminary. So it's a one-point-seven acre multi-use lot that will contain a number of things, Sarah. It'll contain a small detention basin to pick up the backyard water from these homes. It'll contain an infiltration basin that takes the primary water. So this big pond is an outlot. We haven't put the language on the face of the plat. What I did in Fourth Avenue, West Lawn is put language on those pond areas. It said, dedicated to the Village Cottage Grove for the purposes of stormwater management and parkland. So it gave you guys the flexibility to do what you want because there are places within that space that can support, you know, the four-mansion bench and/or a little swing or whatever. But they're green spaces within the neighborhood, but no, I don't want to be misleading. That is not a problem. There is parkland areas planned for the reach that's out to, you know. These areas are a distance away, but as big as it is, the twenty acres in our estimation is maybe not enough, certainly not for here because it's across the road. We don't want people crossing bus. There will be parkland area here. I'm going back and forth on the area around Gaston and Bus. Density will increase, lot size will go down, multifamily will become available, affordability will be presented as we move like this towards the frontages. The only reason I'm not doing it now is I'm surrounded by single family and those folks don't want it here though. So what I'm trying to do is be really forthright and open about where we intend to put it so that people know in advance, before they build their home here, that it might be right here. Versus trying to put it over there next to folks that were there first. I'm trying to get that information out front and be as open and transparent about our intentions there as I can. And I think it's a natural, a natural place to bring it down in terms of lot size and square footage requirements and up in terms of density as we approach what will be the primary intersection.
And as far as the road, the roads go, for Nightingale, it sounds like feasibility-wise, just the landscape doesn't really...
Well, we were instructed by the subcommittees in our dialogue with MSA was that they wanted the ability to connect it if in the future it was deemed necessary. I've talked to Norm on the north side and I think it's Rob on the south side and they really don't want it connected. They're on a nice old street right now. And in very simple terms, it comes in like this and my land goes like that. And they didn't start creating a vertical curve a couple hundred feet back. So we have to launch the aircraft to get up that hill to make a connection. It's possible, I think, it would look really dumb. It's possible. And so we defined that out... And so we, we defined that outlot as a multi-use. So the, the village determined in the future they wanted that street connection to be made. Maybe it's not a full standard village street, you know, thirty-six, thirty-two foot wide curb and gutter sidewalk path, you know, the whole nine yards. Maybe it's a twenty-two-foot-wide town-style section with ditches to transition into their ditches. But we wanted to leave that opportunity open to future planning. I'm not going to be in that phase immediately. I, I know my path is either north or west depending upon where you tell us. Down the hill is not a priority. There's also a small lift station that'll probably be subterranean, but I don't think we've worked that out. We need to engineer that between ourselves, our third-party engineer, Quam Engineering and MSA and the folks at Public Works and Utilities. But there's room for the road, there's room for a path in that lot.
And the other one was Metalark?
Yeah, and that's right here. And that's where we were planning to put that. We put one asphalt path to pick up pedestrian and bicycle traffic and carry that out to Wellington Place so that they could move within the neighborhood. It's, I think one of the letters said that, you know, they did advanced good planning in the seventies or eighties, I think this was the seventies, sort of. They built really long dirt on streets on Sandpiper and Metalark and all over. But we can provide some relief there. If we want to step back from the comments or assertions that were made to those folks from the township at the neighborhood meeting, I guess we could. They all followed up and said, so you're not connecting? I said, no, I'm not caring that, I'm not being told to. But, you know, that, that was a meeting with probably fifty people in it. I know that chairs were full and there were some people standing. Couldn't you say, roughly, Aaron was here?
Discuss more before we...
Yeah.
So I just wanted to put it out there that I live in fourth addition of West Lawn. I think it's a beautiful neighborhood, it's a great community, we have fantastic neighbors, the bike paths are great. And I think Andrew's made some good improvements moving forward on the bike paths with the twenty-foot dedication. I know the Parks Committee is really excited about having the opportunity to plan a twenty-two acre park. Of course, we have to wait a little bit longer, but that gives us the opportunity to invite residents to a Parks Committee and really think about master planning all of the spaces along there. So we don't duplicate, we efficiently plan park space. So there's different activities available for all age levels and really think about what we want to do in all of those spaces along there and how it fits. Because the school has a playground, we have fields around, kind of just to the south of Fourth Ad. At GDS, we'll have fields as a new elementary school. So I think the Parks Committee is really looking forward to working with residents to make it a great community park and a fantastic asset. So I talked with, we talked at our last committee meeting about starting that process in October. I'm really master planning that whole area. I think maybe it might help in our kind of visualizing if, you know, once the dirt pile, is that something possible that can be moved?
The select fill is gone and we're chipping away at the topsoil. It's been a sort of rough year for topsealing things because it's been so wet. But we'll have it out of there soon. I'm trying to find other places to store machinery. You know, it, it, it takes a lot of firepower to build this thing. It just does, it, it takes a scraper and a dozer and several excavators and et cetera, et cetera. Once I can begin construction, hopefully soon, northward on Damascus into Phase One, I tend to gravel a yard up there and get everything moved out. The day you tell me I can, I'm gonna clear it. And then we can grade that park, seed it here in late summer when it's good grass-growing weather and get after it. And we'd love to be a part of that planning process, we don't have to be, but, you know, I have ideas and thoughts about what might be really nice. I'm always thinking about what's missing in the community, hoping to fill that, that hole. And so, and it is a good point, Heidi. I, you know, I want people to understand the reason we didn't put the park in the northwest corner when we were planning Fourth Ad so that we could make people wait. That wasn't the intention. The intention was to put it up in an area where we thought it would grow into a larger, larger park with additions going in from each of these corners in this quadrant. And there was all this green space to the south, athletic fields, basketball courts, all the stuff that's at, uh, the, um, garden, you know, all the things that are at GD. And so we thought, well, why put a big park right next to a big green space? Didn't make sense to me, so we put it up in the corner. It, it just has taken longer to get there than we expected.
And so Heidi, so that little, that part will be part of the master plan?
Yeah, we want to make that part of the master plan so we can figure out how to use our limited resources to make the best thing available. And plan ahead for, oh, we want things laid out, make sure that that's what the community wants. And I, I would like to see communication between, you know, kind of filling in that big blank space. So as sixth addition moves forward, residents have an idea of what, you know, the community's come up with for being in that park. Because I would imagine there'll be some people that would really like to back up to that and some might want to be across the street from it. And it, it might help, you know, those plans actually come into reality as, you know, sixth addition is completed or whatever you call it.
Right.
Yeah, and I, I let a couple of outside forces shove our timeline around, I'm not going to do that again. We're going to plat sixth addition much more quickly than we did between four and five. And if the drive is westward, I think it's this whole chunk right here. And two-thirds of that park gets dedicated immediately. If we dedicated the whole thing, it would be in excess of requirements, roughly. It's a little hard to tell the specific unit count, but that would be our intention is to be, you know, to, to have that phasing element of this master planning process that we engage in together. And get London driven west to bus if that's the intent. If not, we can try to just stretch out and do a small plat, it'd be a little weird, but, you know, other developers do this all the time. You could just do a small plat of twenty-five, thirty lots there, get that in the park and then push this twenty north to, to Gaston at the same time. If the desire is to go north rather than west. Because I've been thinking a lot about it in the last few days as all this has surfaced. So we, we do have flexibility. My current thinking is that a good fourteen, fifteen acres act would be dedicated in sixth ad and we, you know, we only have to push three-hundred-and-thirty feet to get there. But this plat's designed and ready to go and, you know, we're very hopeful to have an affirmative vote this evening so that I can submit a, a final plat and get this thing started this fall yet. So it will have somewhere for people to build in the village next spring. Maybe even the winter if we're lucky and, you know, we get days like this for the next three, four months.
One follow-up question to your part comment, will it include that one-point-seven acres in this part of the grand master?
The, the lower parts of the chain, the bike paths between?
Oh, no, I think Sarah's talking about this.
Yeah.
We didn't specifically address that, but I, yeah, especially if it's, if the addition of those more...
You know, we're fortunate that we have some overlap between Ravenwood and that outlot. So my intention would be to build a path connection from Wellington through that outlot over to the park so that, you know, Town and Village residents can crisscross through that connection. That would be north of where the potential road would sit.
I think it's really unique that we're able to look at this large of a man space to plan a neighborhood. And I think that, you know, I really like how things are coming together with the park in the middle. And I think that's really going to help bring the community together. I am a little bit concerned about the town connections never being possible in some of those spots, especially Metalark coming down. Just connectivity-wise, I, I would hate for us to look back in thirty years and say, why didn't we make that possible? But now we'd have to use eminent domain to get two houses and so we can build the road through. But I'm hesitant that it's just not, we're making it not possible here when we have the opportunity to create a better flowing network. For, for many reasons, to disperse traffic in a better way instead of, you know, funneling everyone south more to another connection. So I know it's later in the process than would be ideal to make those kinds of changes, but I feel like it's a conversation worth having.
John, could...
Yes, Lee?
The issue, Heidi, is I don't know of any way to force the town to put the connections or to allow us to put the connections through. I researched this, I also contacted the lead, I contacted the Department of Administration, not only the Boundary Department, but also the Planning Department. And I haven't been able to come up with a way that we can force the town to do this. I know there's a reference to foresight in the seventies, but I think according to it, which is what I found in what was said at one of the joint meetings, they, they were... Steve Anders, I think, basically said that they were coerced into allowing the connection. And at least what I see from those minutes of June twenty-seventh, there were at least three of the town trustees who said, or town supervisors, who said, well, we voted out of office if we agree to that, or I'm not going to agree to that. And I'm not criticizing that so much as I'm just saying, well, here's the reality. So when, when we're told or we're asked to make those connections, I just would like to know from whoever's saying that, how do we do that? So I just want, I, I just want the board to understand that it's one thing to say that, and it's another thing to actually have it come to pass. Back in two thousand thirteen, I think, when the Hombricks did Fourth Ad, one of the things that they were told was to complete the construction of Morning Dove and Pheasant Run to the east border of their land. And then they shall coordinate construction connection with the Town and Cottage Grove, which at least, I mean, they attempted and that was unsuccessful. So, again, I, I'd be happy to hear any ideas, but I, I have a concern that saying, you have to do this, is not going to really lead anything.
And we're built to those property lines. We're built as far as we can go with Morning Dove Drive and Pheasant Run.
And in this plat, are they built, are the ones that could connect to the new plan to be built as far as they can go?
So these are, this is Pheasant Run here and that's built to its east limits with the town?
That's in the fourth, I mean, in the fifth, in the new plat. Do we have any built connection that could go up to existing town where that could be all, Nightingale is the only one?
Yeah, the outlot number eleven provides opportunity for that because I, I didn't want to designate a specific road right of way because of the grid constraints. I'm just not comfortable with that engineering and I don't know how it would look other than, as I said earlier, perhaps stupid. But the, the lot would allow the construction of that. And as I said before, geometrically, Thrush is a mess. I, I don't know how I would do that. The only one that has any potential in my mind is Metalark. Has a non-silly look.
And that's where you currently have a path?
Yeah.
But it would take, I guess in a road would take more lots out of the...
Yes. Wellington is a thirty-two face, and I haven't touched on that, I'd like to. Damascus, as I said, is a north-south arterial, or collector, thirty-six wide face-to-face curb and gutter on a seventy-foot right-of-way. London is, is designed as the same thing as the thirty-six wide face-to-face. Wellington, Paris and Canberra are all thirty-two foot wide face-to-face on a sixty-foot right-of-way. And there are sidewalks on both sides of every street as well as a path proposed. The asphalt path that terminates here is being proposed to cross this intersection and then drive west to the park and to bus. I don't have sidewalk proposed for Canberra. Our experience in the past has been that it's nicer on a cul-de-sac, Lindsay Court, Conservancy Court, Fox Circle. It's really difficult to shovel and plow on those circles and so on. That short little cul-de-sac and that little street, we don't have sidewalk, but otherwise there's sidewalks everywhere. From an emergency services perspective, one of the comments that was made is that, you know, we, we are doing a disservice to the residents by not accommodating that. At that meeting that Lee alluded to, I had the police chief, fire chief, EMS chief standing next to me saying, give us the permit to connect those streets or give Humber the permit to connect those streets. And it was a combined board meeting with the Town and Village Boards and they voted no. We tried, we tried real hard.
Well, I think one of the comments like Lee brought up was politically wise, they'd be voting themselves out of office by approving it.
You know, in thinking about the comments and, and the connectivity issue, we reduced the scope of the multi-use path that came up along GDS from ten and a half foot wide down to eight because the scale was more consistent with the residential neighborhood. I didn't want it to feel like a road or even that people would drive down it. So like, you know, what's being built along the south side of Kajago Road, that's ten and a half, I believe. Is it the new, new path, ten? I have this proposed as an eight-foot-wide path on a twenty-foot outlot, just like the rest of them, but we could bump that. You know, it, it might look a little odd, but we could, we could widen that out and put a gate at the north end of it that would, you know, constrain kids and drunks from driving down it. Make it ten, eleven feet wide, whatever, and then if police, CMS, fire have their own, they've got Tumblr keys to get them into every building in the community so we could do something similar right there. Put a Knox box on a post and if they need to scream down that street for some reason because there's a catastrophe on Damascus, they could drive right down that path. That was one of the ideas that, you know, we came up with today.
You know, Jeff, I don't think that their comments that they, politically, it's not wise for them to approve. Because it's a town subdivision with a few streets that if the streets were to connect, it would lighten up for other streets in that area.
For sure.
So I don't think they're necessarily looking at the full picture on it.
Yeah, because the more connections there are to get over to Sandpiper, that would reduce part of Sandpiper. And as we continue connections north and west, you know, traffic will disperse better and it'll really reduce the load on, you know, the one north-south that we have now, which is Sandpiper. Is there a way to reconfigure the lots that match up to Metalark to allow for enough space that a road could be built in the future? I mean, obviously not to the scale that you have at Nightingale, but... Well, you would, but at least you wouldn't have to...
She's thinking ahead and just...
Yeah, I mean, in thirty years when, if there are septic systems that are filling and Ravenwood wants to annex into the village and receive village water and sewer services, that, you know, then we don't end up with a dead end on the other side.
So there's about forty feet, Heidi, from the end of that, kind of a, it's kind of an egg-shaped bulb-looking cul-de-sac there. Daggett family lives to the east, another family lives to the west. You can see on this map how the driveways come off of that. From an engineering perspective, it's better than Nightingale and it's possible as opposed to Thrush. We'd have to just simply take footage out of those adjacent lots, you know, lose a lot, put a sixty-foot right-of-way on there and build a road. Or put a right-of-way there that would accommodate a road if you chose to connect it once you're given the right to connect it. I think it's silly to build a hundred-and-fifty-foot-long dead-end streets and have them sit there for the last five years being plowed and maintained and shoveled with no hope in sight of connectivity. And a comment's been made that maybe in fifty years, forty years, you know, everyone has changed chairs and somebody will see the wisdom in it. But in the meantime, we spent a lot of money and energy maintaining something that does nothing. And there are examples of that in Madison... And there are examples of that in Madison and Dane County, all over the place, where there's dead-end streets that I know have been there for decades, you know, when people thought they'd work it out. And my experience hasn't been very successful at working it out. But I'm not close to the suggestion of Meadowlark. I think it would provide us another north-south alternative. And in particular, if we push west to bus, it gives us a northern connection to Gaston, and then, you know, fire, EMS, police can come off of the interstate, roll down Gaston east and west, and, and drop down Meadowlark. The folks from that neighborhood aren't going to be very happy with us because we told them it wasn't going to connect. And maybe if the township doesn't give us a permit, it doesn't connect. Because I, I don't have any differing conditions than I have in the past down on Pheasant Run and Morning Dove. Morning Dove is a thirty-six face-to-face, designed to be a collector's street going east-west all the way from Nightingale to our, I'm sorry, from, well, certainly from Sandpiper to bus. But we, you know, we were stuffed to the east by the township, and we were stuffed to the west by the school district, and I just have a street built.
Andrew, if the priorities given, west to bus or north to Gaston, which would occur first to your opinion? Or would that occur about the same time?
West to bus or north of Gaston?
North or to Gaston? To get another...
I have no plans. Allery kept the twenty-five acres north of Gaston, as well as his twenty acres that surrounds his homestead. His family's been on that farm for generations and, you know...
So, he would get the bus road before we get to Gaston?
Yes. And we did annex the entirety of bus road and Gaston road during the annexation process. And I believe the district resubmitted their petition to correct that and to pick up the west side of bus. So, we have the entirety of bus, we have the entirety of Gaston. As far as our east limits right there.
I think if you build north to, to Gaston without that, those connections to bus, you're really going to increase the traffic on Damascus. You know, where all the neighborhoods are going to funnel either north or south, primarily south, but also north to the interstate, by getting some connections over to, in, in that density of that, that would get built over to bus, knowing that cross-section that's approved for bus, a better road is getting built there, so... And it would be kind of finishing what the school district would be doing to the south of it, so it would all time out to be a better, a better road within a signalized intersection and cottage road to bus. Take a lot of the traffic.
And kind of talking about funneling a lot of traffic on one main road. There is only, there was only one main road then handed over at the time when you bought Fourth Edition. But now we're going to be adding another hundred homes that will be funneling down Damascus Trail also. In addition to all the construction vehicles and all the equipment needed, there's... I haven't watched it myself, but I assume there's a lot of work that goes into building out roadways and all the infrastructure underneath and...
Well, and all the homes.
And all the homes. I've, I've seen that part of it, but when you get all of those pieces working together, there's going to be a lot of extra traffic on Damascus Trail. Do you see any way we could have a conversation about running some of that traffic on a different route or internally throughout the property? Or some way that we might be able to alleviate some of that traffic running down Damascus?
You know, we intentionally built Red Hawk Trail and Pheasant Run narrow, thirty-two face-to-face to try to slow people down and control speeding. Because once it's all done, and it's close to done, and everyone's out of there, those, those streets function pretty well. The chicane's that were put at the crossings are a little further west than I would have preferred, but we anticipated a header street right here going north-south, and then they were central on, on those segments of road between, you know, what was to be fundamental north-south. So, it gets tight. You know, if it's a one-ton with a trailer hooked up to it and, and/or a form truck or whatever, it does get tight. And I, I wish we could control every truck that came in and out of there. We don't. There's all sorts of folks, you know, concrete people and, and drywall people and framers and all the things that it takes to build a house. Takes half a year to build a house. They'll tell you four months. It's a little more usually. And we keep a pretty tight rein on it. If they make the street muddy, we just go clean it up. If somebody's speeding, I go talk to them. I think the assertions that we're driving around there staring at phones and smoking cigarettes and driving recklessly are false, heavily false. And I take offense at it. Because we're very vested in the neighborhood, we care a lot about the neighborhood. So, if it feels personal, it's because it is. We, we are trying very hard to do right. And people had to drive by other folks' houses to build the ones past them. And, and if you were the first guy in, they drove through a different neighborhood to get to you. I went to the parade of homes out in the town of Middleton. First time I've visited one of those sites in ten years. I've, I've never really ascribed to it, but I wound through, I couldn't believe the path I wound through to get to that parade site. And it was the only way in and out. It, they would kill for this situation. I, I couldn't believe how meandering it was, and all of the traffic had to follow that path. It's the nature of development. There's a period of time when it's a little tougher, and then it's over and, and, you know, we get our connections made. This has been particularly tough because we've been, as I said, we've been jammed to the east and jammed to the west, and from the south. Instead of two up out of the district, we got one. And, you know, fundamentally, it's like it's not going to happen as a north-south either, so I can't, I can't control it all. We have what we have.
Coyle Highlands started in two thousand two, and we, we had Sandpiper as the only way in and out of that, that many acres on the north side until two thousand eight. So, about six years later, Port Crossing was constructed, another connection to Cottage Grove Road. There's also a, a connection near the end too that went across the township, continuing Sandpiper. Bent through that situation. And that's why I think it's key that, you know, the next addition does include the connection over to bus. When Fourth Edition came in for review, it was also that same question, will the signals at Cottage Grove Road and Damascus be able to handle the Fourth Edition? Shouldn't we build a temporary road over to bus? I would say this addition, they're showing, and the Fourth Edition would be about as far as they'd go without getting another road connection over to bus.
So, with Meadowlark though, if you had it stubbed out or able to be made into a street, it would be doing the same thing that Damascus Trail would eventually do. It would be giving the north-south connection without going through town, property that, or town road that wasn't really meant to handle as much of a load like Damascus. Because Damascus Trail is more than likely going to hit Gaston Road before Meadowlark will ever be connected to village property.
It really was our thought process, Melissa. I think you've hit it on the head, because we looked at it and said, "What does it do?" You know, once Damascus is built to Gaston, it, it irritates the neighborhood, is what it does. But in the meantime, it would provide relief if they allow us to connect it. But it, it does kind of duplicate. That is, you know, that is the premise of, of running multiple north-souths and east-west is so you can duplicate paths and disperse traffic. I, I know there's folks on Killian that signed this petition that would love to see things happen that would relieve pressure from their road because the refusal to connect Morning Dove Drive as a, as a collector's street and Pheasant Run as a local neighborhood street has concentrated traffic on Killian, and the multiple stop signs are evidence of it. But again, I can't change that without, I suppose we could just go out there, pave it, cut the trees down, and see what happened, but I feel like the attorney would get mad at me.
I don't think we're condoning that here.
No, you didn't hear that.
Is there a cost to the town for allowing you to connect it?
No.
Or is it just, it's a, so it's not a financial barrier that they're facing for this?
It's a, it's a jurisdictional issue.
There's maybe twenty or thirty feet of both Pheasant Run and Morning Dove on the town side that need to be extended, but I, I think you are willing to do that.
We'll pay for it, we'll build it. If someone could help us get a permit, I'd love to see those streets connected tomorrow. We'd drop working in the parking lot and do it.
I guess my main concern is that if those lots weren't to shift to allow for roadway to go through at some point, it's, it would never be possible. Even though it seems like Morning Dove and Pheasant Run are actually never going to be possible, they are actually possible if we can overcome that. But here, it's just that there would then be a house in the way.
You know, I don't know if you tie, I'm sorry.
Oh, I was just going to confirm, so you like the idea of Meadowlark being built up to, or taking that?
Just taking that lot.
Taking that lot and making it a road. Yes, is that what I'm hearing?
Ideally stubbing it out or at the very least providing the outlot that it could be done in the future.
Maybe you tie the construction of that to the issuance of a permit to connect the two existing ones, so we don't build another maintenance issue for ourselves. You know, prove that there's sincerity.
All, all three at once?
Well, you know, otherwise, we're just blindly doing it, and we've got hope here and...
Or we could tell the town that we won't build Meadowlark if they give us the other two permits.
Yeah, I, I, if I had the solution to that puzzle.
Anything else from staff regarding this? I think Andrew's covered it pretty well.
Yeah, I've got staff reports. I think we've talked around and around about a lot of the issues, and I know we have some public that are eager to speak as well. I guess as far as the road condition, road connections, whether that's consistent with the comp plan or not, I guess the question is, is the comp plan showing roads to the edge or is it showing connections? To me, I think the intention is to have the connections, and obviously there's a lot of skepticism in whether that's going to happen or not. If we've got a clear path to do that, or a deadline to do that, or something like that, then, you know, absolutely, I think we should stub out the roads, but... The intent with the outlot at Nightingale was to provide an opportunity to do that. Certainly if we want the wider outlot connecting to Meadowcrest than Meadowlark, you know, certainly that's a reasonable ask. Yeah, if you had more thoughts on that or...
No, it's, we've done that before, a number of different ways, whether it's an outlot, but you just hold the outlot. And, you know, the thought with an outlot is if it totally fails and doesn't ever go through, you can quit, claim that to the property owners on each side. You could dedicate the right-of-way to be more exact, to say, "We want a road there." And then the third, more higher level is to actually build the road like we did below on the other two streets, Pheasant Run and Morning Dove. So, any of those options are there. I, I guess, yeah, we would support, you know, engineering-wise, more connectivity. So, they're already putting a twenty-foot outlot in for a trail. Would have to expand to a sixty-foot outlot or right-of-way for a road. And it could start out as a trail that could be made a road in the future. And, you know, we could get, you know, as we progress through the phasing of this, you know, some financial surety for building the road in the future as well. So, that's, those are all possible. I, I guess the, the grade issue of going to Nightingale is there, I would foresee some sort of cut through the outlot that, that's being provided in green there for the road to kind of dive through, if you will, down to the lower grade. That might, might require some kind of grade back or retaining walls, but could be done. So, that's something we definitely wanted to have as a possibility of getting Nightingale to go through. There were, was another development on the other side of the town development in the village that was looking at that. And, you know, connecting Nightingale over into the village and further connections to the east, so, you know, that, that was, that would be a good...
Running into wetlands though?
There was a, there was some mapped wetland on the other side, so they would have to be re-verified. I know some of that, they felt was because of the wetland in the village, and the wetland in the village was just scraped, and so that changed conditions. We don't know yet. That, that was kind of one of the things imposing a future build on Nightingale. Thrush does have, you know, issues as far as how it works with the development, but those two connections would make sense for future possibilities. Our other comments are all, you know, engineering, stormwater-related. We always felt as the additions went north, the open fields that were draining through the township and then back into the village would be detained and improve conditions. And I think we, at least I heard from, from at least one person that they've noticed that it has changed as far as the extension of Damascus going north and south. We also want to make sure, and our comments relate to rear yard discharge and some of the old channels that stormwater used to follow as far as making sure those get picked up. And then the twenty acres of the eastern part of this Fifth Edition will be on a sanitary pumping station, and that'll be one of the multi-uses in that eastern outlot. So, we'll be pumping sanitary back towards Damascus Trail. But all our comments are just kind of the preliminary as far as the engineers, engineering, they did provide plan and profile drawings of all the streets. And we would leave those, so it was, looked like a good start.
Do you have thoughts on the use of the trails for emergency vehicle access?
Yeah, they'd have to be wider. Typically, emergency use would be more like half a road width as a minimum, which would be looking at more like twelve feet. We've done things there from cell block pavers, you know, that emergency vehicles can drive on, you know, wider than you may want to put asphalt down, but it, it should be at least twelve feet for...
Okay.
I guess I just have a safety concern of one way in and one way out of a hundred home development. If something blocks that lower end, how are people getting out? If there's a way you could extend the road either all the way to bus or, or all the way to Gaston, at least there's more than one way out. That's your property. You know, you could plan for the cross-streets and everything as you do that. But I just think, you know, if there's some sort of a natural disaster and that lowering gets blocked, there's no way for people to get out.
I think that's where the path might be an option.
Yeah, and just, you know...
My path in consideration. At least, since we know we can get in.
Up to Meadowlark?
Yeah, and at least that's emergency-only.
Mm-hmm.
It need be. And eventually you'll get east and eventually you'll get north.
And it wouldn't have to be gated, that was just a concept. I was just worried about people going down it, it shouldn't be.
Did I also understand that it could be an actual road? Or are we only talking up to an emergency vehicle halfway?
No, it could be a road. We'd have to eliminate a lot.
But it wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to connect to the town's road though?
Yeah.
Correct.
Right, we can, but we could, to Heidi's point, build it?
In the future.
Hoping that there's a change of direction.
Yeah, there could be a right-of-way dedication. That would accommodate a road being built if the conditions allow it.
So, the town would allow a walking path?
No, our walking path will end at the property line. They'll have to walk through thirty feet of grass to get to Meadowlark or Nightingale or whatever, but the kids do it already on the dead end, so, you know, we've kind of cleared out a little opening in the brush, you know, wind was blowing our way when we trimmed the leaves. And the kids ride their bikes there, and they walk through there, and they find a way.
All right, we had a, a few citizens that either wanted to voice their opinion...
All right, we had a few citizens that either wanted to voice their opinion or actually speak. Just a reminder, we're asking folks just to limit their comments, if they do speak, to up to three minutes. Land Dang, just as concerned about traffic, circulation, noise, and safety. Did you want to speak at all?
Who should I say? You?
Oh, please come up there and state your name and by the, the mic, or move the mic over to the floor if you prefer.
Okay, hello everyone. My name is Loan. You can call me Loan. I live on Damascus Trail, and I'm here to raise the concerns and, first of all, I would like to thank you all that the village trustee, because you already mentioned that, I think most of you, because Damascus is only one road. It's just like, that's my, my concern, and why, why do I have that concern? I live right here. I'm one of the first people who moved into the neighborhood. And I'm living through five years of the extension, and I'm living through all the construction. So, maybe, maybe I didn't see much, but I saw them all. So, the thing is, I'm not, I'm here not to oppose to the development, I'm not against growth for Cottage Grove. I actually support all of this. I love the park. I'm not here for the park, and if, you know, I'm here for the road. I do have one question. It sounds like, it made me very excited, London Road, where exactly it is?
Yeah, right there.
It's right here?
Yep.
It would be wonderful if we had London Road open before the fifth addition. Because that road will carry all the constructions and everything else. You talk about the bottleneck on Damascus Trail because there is a school right there in the, in the morning or in the afternoon, or even they have a soccer game. It's a very, very difficult. Sometimes I drove like a five miles an hour or even slower. And it's just very busy, and I, there is another 100 commercial apartment building between CVS and Cottage Grove. I believe that is, if that construction is going on, and this construction is going on, the Damascus Trail, I don't know, it's, it becomes very dangerous. I have two children. I believe everybody in our neighborhood have many children, and the noise. And I'm not talking about just a normal car, of the resident driving, I'm talking about like the heavy, oversized construction vehicle. And when they ran by your house, you can, you can feel it. So I work at home, so that's why I can see it. You can feel every time they went by. It's very noisy. I have a very nice front porch with a patio set. It's just so dusty, I cannot even sit outside. So I live through five years of the construction. I think that if I had to live in five more years and waiting for this road to connect, by some reason they cannot connect beyond our control. But I think that there is one solution, London. If London can be made, unlike the park, we have to plan, we have to ask people about their opinion. The road is there, supposed to be there, and if we have it now, it can save a lot of work, and might save a lot of money too. So that's my point. Thank you.
Thank you. Dean Becker, also in the village, concerned about one access point on Phase Five.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak here. I'm just gonna, it's gonna be short because I'm gonna kind of clear it with Loan said and what Troy had said about just the one access point with all that. With the school, I, I live, just live up on Damascus, just up from Hyden, just up from Bryan. I was the fourth house up there. And, yeah, the amount of traffic, and you think about one house, all the different constructions, cement trucks, heating and cooling, I mean, you name it, it just goes into one house. Coming up and down here, not to mention, my wife also teaches at the middle school there, not to mention all the, the traffic from the school is, it's, Damascus is already very, very busy. So now you add all this in there, it would, yeah, it would be, it would be a lot. London Road, because that road is here, it's already in the plan, it's got, I mean, it would be there. If that was where all the, once, if all the trucks can just access that, that would make, it wouldn't be going through any neighborhoods. You wouldn't have to worry about all the schools, when school's in and out, all the kids walking, when they're walking with their school, all those trucks coming up and down there. It would, and it can get access right to, right to the property, and everybody could take that road right to all the projects. All right, that's, that's my, same thing with Loan. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Grady, in favor of the floundering with modifications, lack of street connections, existing streets seem okay. I did email my comments, this is the same thing, for your records.
Yep, and they're forwarded to Lisa, and they will be included in the pack itself.
Thank you so much. I guess, Brian Grady, 3010, Pheasant Run, I'm gonna try to zoom into this, if I can figure it out real quick. That's pretty good. So I did speak at the Plan, at the Plan Commission Union last, last Wednesday. I just want to start off with, aren't roads fun? Roads are fun, right? This is fun? This is not fun. This is complicated. What's that?
I said, beans are fun.
I second that, second that comment, especially on beautiful summer nights like tonight. Roads are fun, but overall, I do want to start off, I mentioned my comments to the village board that emailed last night. I want, I want to mention that, for any of my comments, I am very good friends with, with both Chris and Andrew, Chris and Andrew Humbert. The pleasure of serving with Chris, he's a stalwart of the Monona Plan Commission. I was on the Plan Commission with Chris for four years in Monona. He's, he's very dedicated to community, just as Andrew is. So I wanted to mention that this is, these are not personal towns by any means. We are friends, we remain friends, but I do live in the neighborhood. I do, I do want to make sure that we can have the best neighborhood that we can have now and into the future. So I just wanted to preface my comments with that. They're very dedicated to both Monona Grove, Monona and Cottage Grove communities. For the reasons that I outlined tonight, I tried to keep it simple with some bullet points here. I was hoping there was 10 points, there's actually 11, that's awkward. But, but overall, my main concern is, I've kind of come up in the discussion so far with, with the village board, is the three streets that do connect, that come out to the edge of this fifth edition property should connect in some way. It is our job to create an effective transportation network for our community. And then Andrew's initial comments, this evening, he mentioned that the fifth edition is in the core of a neighborhood. It is in the core of the neighborhood, it is in the middle of this neighborhood. Unfortunately, the eastern half does not tie into the neighborhood. And so when we're doing development, as Andrew mentioned as well, there's, there's phasing here. He, he respects the fact that some folks in the neighborhood subdivision next door have been there for a while. They were there first. They were there first. That neighborhood exists. It's our job as a community, when we approve new development, to connect into those neighborhoods. We have to tie into them. If we just wall off each other, we're not creating neighborhoods, we're creating standalone subdivisions. Overall, Meadowlark Street should continue into the, into the subdivision. We should stub it out to make that future connection. Saying Nightingale has been somewhat keyed up, we need to strengthen that. Thrush, as Andrew mentioned, comes in at kind of an odd angle, not ideal. I recommend there be a ped bike, ped bike path. Overall, again, our, our focus as a community should be connecting these streets together. As we discussed a little bit, and I live in the fourth edition, this is my napkin sketch here, here's the fourth edition. I live right down here, some of my neighbors along Damascus in this area. When this was, project was reviewed, conceptual wise, approved, there was two streets that come out of the town, Morning Dove and Pheasant Run. We decided to stub in village streets into those town dead ends. That was the right call. Our comp plan recommended it. That was the right call. We also, to take this a little further, stubbed our streets off to the, to the western edge of the property. That was the right call. We want to spread traffic as much as possible. We connected into town, we stubbed into town streets, we extended our streets. Let's keep doing this. Where I mentioned facetiously that roads are fun, it is easiest if we're just consistent. Let's just keep it simple. If we just connect all the streets, we're not gonna get in this game where, you know, this street went through from here, and this one didn't, well, what about this one? Let's negotiate. Let's just keep it simple. Let's follow our comp plan recommendations. Let's connect them all. Because then, obviously, it's gonna be less of a difficult decision, and it'd be a less difficult decision for everyone to make.
Brian, when you say connect them, do you mean stub them? Because we can't connect with the town now.
Stub them in, just like we did with Pheasant Run, yep, and, and Morning Dove. So we stub these in, and that's all, all that we can do at this point, as, as you've, as you've mentioned. I do want to mention, on those two stubs, they are, they are maintenance. I'll admit, they are maintenance. I'll make my points here in one second. They are maintenance. But quite frankly, who paid for them? I paid for them. My neighbors paid for them. Humbert paid from up front, but trust me, we paid him back in profit. It was not profitable, he's not gonna keep buying land and keep developing. We paid for them. We should pay for them. The people that live in the neighborhood should pay for them. There is some maintenance for the village, maybe some maintenance for, for Humbert in the meantime. But if we don't connect these streets, we have lost that opportunity going forward. It's our responsibility, just like the folks in Reaganwood that stubbed up these streets, our responsibility to follow through on this. Figuring out when those roads actually connect, that's step two. Let's focus on step one though tonight with this preliminary plat, because this is, is the only opportunity that I have to, to make my, my case. Overall, point number one, foresight in the 1970s. So yes, Reaganwood luckily does have, so I do want to mention, you guys are...
Brian, one more minute. You've heard you.
Sounds good.
Three minutes.
Sounds good.
Make your points, please.
As you know, Nightingale stubbed out, Meadowlark stubbed out, Nightingale stubbed out, Thrush stubbed out. I will go quick. 1970s, these streets are stubbed out, we're fortunate to be able to make these connections. We do not have two communities that are, that are walled off from each other. Comp plan recommends these street connections. We must be consistent, comp plan state law must be consistent, all lane decisions must be consistent with the comp plan recommendations. We recommend those streets. Let's follow through on that. I mentioned a recent, the recent approval in fourth edition. Extend the streets, we connected them, east and west. Let's keep going, keep them going. What's changed, I asked the Plan Commission Union last Wednesday. What's changed is the town's now open to the streets going through. They recommend the town letter, I hope you received the letter from the town, the town board, engineering department, engineering consulting firm. They suggest Nightingale go through for future water and sewer connections. They recommend that. Chris Anthon at the, at the meeting last Wednesday said, it's about public safety when asked about street connections. Just ask, it's about public safety. First responders, we can shave off, if we connect these streets, we can shave off a mile-plus drive in, in three minutes. I'll tell you what, if these streets, if these streets connect in, let's figure it out. I know, I tell you how to get this connected. A person dies of a heart attack, it takes three more minutes to get there, or you can't put out a fire because there's, there's only one way in, you can't directly approach a fire from both sides. That will get the streets through. No one will get voted out of office, you may get voted off if you don't put the streets through if that happens. I want to avoid that situation. We want to spread, spread traffic, not concentrate it. Spread them, connect every road, should connect. Nightingale should go through Damascus. I'm gonna give up on that point for right now, for the second time, I only have three seconds left. We should not delay the construction of Nightingale, the developers posing a T up Nightingale. I can put this outline in. If you don't build it, it's not gonna happen. I've seen it many times. I will, I will buy you all drinks and show you cases where if we don't build a street right of way, not gonna happen. The street goes in, there's transparency, there's clarity that that road will go through. You must build it from day one. That, that is my recommendation. We have to have Humbert, though, T up his subdivision to allow that Nightingale connection to make work, to, to make sense, to be able to do it. We want to put the cost on future buyers in the neighborhood, not us. We don't want to deal with this in five, 10 years now. Put the cost on the future buyers that will be living in the neighborhood and using that, and using that connection. Must put them right of way, shifting the cost. We also want to connect neighborhoods. We have to connect neighborhoods. We can't turn our back on each other. You also can't spread, you can't put a fire hose over someone's house down Nightingale or down Meadowlark if there's a fire to respond to. There's a fire down in Nondale Heights off of, off of Vilas Road, a pretty major fire, several months ago. They trucked in water from a fire hydrant by CVS to go all the way down Vilas Road to put out a, a town fire. If these roads go through, all you gotta do is run the hose down, down the, down that path on the fire hydrant. If there's no connection there, if there's two trees in the way between a, a village street and a town street, at least animals can drive around that tree if those streets go there. If it's a lot backing up to it, you can't even drive up, you can't drive up to someone's backyard to respond to an emergency.
Okay, Brian, I think we got the...
And one last comment. I was, I was taking the family out on a drive, checking out these connections on Sunday. My four-year-old son Gus put it perfectly, as we drove down three dead-end streets. Dad, why are we driving down these dead-end streets? I said, you know what, Gus? That's a perfect question for the village board and the town board. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Brian. Brian Rathgibert, Rathgibert. And Brian is on Damascus Trail as well.
Thanks, everyone. Really appreciate the opportunity to speak. As I just said, we're, we're not opposed to like what we're seeing here. It's the, the order of this that's really like very concerning. The idea that all of this is gonna funnel all down Damascus Trail is like the key issue with all the noise and public safety concerns. So I passed out a petition that was, just started, we started it last night and did a little bit this morning. Have over 50 village residents who eagerly signed up for this, so I'll just read it. Dear Cottage Grove Village Trustees, as concerned residents of Cottage Grove, we are opposed to the proposed plat for Western, West Lawn Estates' fifth edition as presented to the Plan Commission on Wednesday, August 14th. We respectfully ask that no approval be given until a direct connection from West Lawn Estates' fifth edition to Bus Road or Gaston Road is made, because we believe failure to do so will create public safety, traffic, and noise problems. If this connection cannot be made for some technical or legal reason, we believe the fifth edition plat should not be approved. Our main concern is Damascus Trail being the only way in and out of the fourth and fifth editions, which will contain over 180 homes and will be used by countless heavy construction vehicles over the course of the next five years. As a matter of public safety, there needs to be multiple ways in and out of the neighborhood. Our neighborhood has many children of a variety of ages, and heavy equipment going back and forth has been a major safety concern, as well as source of noise, and will get significantly worse with the addition of 100 homes and associated construction traffic. Making the public safety problem much worse is the fact that the only entrance to GDS is also on Damascus Trail. There's already been significant congestion getting to and from GDS in the morning, and the additional traffic from the fifth edition will make this much worse. Furthermore, very large numbers of children must cross Damascus Trail and/or Killian Trail to get to school or their bus stop, which happens around the same time of day many contractors and Humbert staff are starting their day. Sometimes contractors are driving very fast and/or using their mobile device and not necessarily focusing on the safety of our children. Putting all this traffic on the same street as our children trying to get to school is not acceptable. For the foregoing reasons, we urge you to vote against the proposed plat for West Lawn Estates' fifth edition until the traffic issue is resolved. Brian Rathgibert, Brandon Dockersgood, Jeremy Schmidt, Dana Schmidt, Sandy Danowski, Ashley Majewski, Julie Cartucio, Rory Enners, David Watson, Reed Watson, Rebecca Nicky, Chris Palentier, Brittany Palentier, Steve Schaefer, Jamie Schaefer, Jake Schaefer, Iris Hill, Brett Jundal, Lisa Jundal, Mike Hill, Tracy Becker, Dean Becker, Ben Havely, Leah Havely.
Brian, we can include these in, in the meeting minutes. You provided a copy of this, so I think, I think we, we certainly get the petition and as well as all the folks that signed, over 50 of them, so.
So I also, I also want to point out, these were collected like in the dog days of summer, so many people were vacation. Everyone who I talked to was very enthusiastic about this. The, the key thing we're looking for is if, if Andrew's gonna be building this road eventually anyway, and he has the firepower to do it, and we know he can build roads really well in neighborhoods. If he could just build this as part of this, you'd go from having all these people lined up against it to basically people who are like, all right, let's, let's build some subdivisions and houses, and let's just do this. let's, let's build some subdivisions and houses and let's just do this. You know, this road has to get built anyway. This provides a real way in, in an emergency to our neighborhood, not relying on a recreational path which may have 10 feet of snow on top in the wintertime, or who knows what's there. This, this is what we pay our tax dollars for, is for real safety. 100 homes plus 80 homes, all having one bottleneck, is completely unacceptable. People have talked about a temporary like construction road. I mean, we need like a real road from, Bus Road is built for this kind of traffic. It could, you know, if Andrew had the contractors and the construction traffic all over here on a road that's going to get built anyway as part of this plan instead of Damascus Trail, then all that noise for, for us would go away. All right? We've been five years like listening to it. You know, we knew it would be a little noisy for a few years, but we didn't know it was going to be like this for so long. Having this road, a real road that's designed to carry that kind of traffic and construction vehicles would really help out with the noise and the safety issues. This is where the students are going to school here. We don't want all of those contractors going up and down this road, not to mention 100 additional like homes worth of residents all funneled artificially onto this one road. There's no guarantee, they're already talking about a recession. I mean, I hope it doesn't happen, but there's no guarantee any of this will get built ever. I mean, of course we all want it to, and I think it's going to be beautiful someday. But I think in the very beginning, if we built this road or redid it so that he didn't go up so high and went like over or something, so you'd have a major road in. Another thing, Damascus Trail is already completely finished. Why do we want to have like all those heavy vehicles driving over this road that's finished damaging that road when they can instead go over a temporary, you know, the road when it's like halfway paved? They go over that, build this whole neighborhood, and don't cause all that extra wear and tear on Damascus Trail.
Okay.
So, does anybody make questions? I mean, we've put a lot of time into the petition. People have been really enthusiastically supporting it. I, I just want to know if anyone has any questions for me. I'm a resident, I've lived there.
Any questions from the board?
I guess my question's for Andrew on his-
Yeah, it's, it's pretty clear. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Brian.
I do really appreciate the opportunity.
Yeah, I'm kind of with Sarah. I'd like to have Andrew on. Yeah.
That was the last public-
Yes. Yes, sorry.
So you said earlier, Andrew, that, you know, you, you were kind of leaving it up to the board's decision whether we go north, south, east, west. What's feasibility of, of, you know, doing London Road in, in unison with Five?
We have to move from the intersection of Damascus West, because that's where the utilities are. And the utilities and the gradient have to be done before the road's built. So from a construction perspective, I can't start at Bus and go east. It's not an option. The infrastructure is upside down. Here, which is, that's where we have to start. And we'll get up to London and push west, and like I said before, but from London, from the terminals of Fifth Ad to Bus Road is 1,800 feet of roadway that, you know, the infrastructure has to start east and move west to that, to Bus. So, and I, I believe some of that drainage way goes down Bus as well. We'll be looking for the school district's construction too, right?
Yes.
Some of that sewer shut.
That's part of it, and then the other things we're working out, that'll be developer's agreement with the school, be the three roads in the fourth ad coming up and connecting into London as part of the, via group two site plan. So I brought up this construction route because of the utilities that would come up Red Hawk Trail and provide sanitary sewer service that's going to need to be blasting through that high rock area that was mentioned by Andrew earlier. So as far as getting utilities in, that, I foresee that will be, you know, that'll be a couple of years out at least, but as far as getting a construction entrance in, I, I don't see what would hold that up.
What do you mean by a construction entrance?
Like a, a, just a road for the construction equipment to get in and out. That would be something where, you know, whatever they put in there for improvements will pretty much be destroyed by utility construction when they build the actual phase. So not a full standard road, but just a, like a town road.
For big heavy construction, trucks and equipment?
Yes.
From Bus Road to the fifth edition?
Correct.
Is that something that's feasible to build?
In my opinion, no. To have a year-round drivable surface there, 2,000, 1,800 feet long, and be able to direct everything onto that when we've built Damascus to standards. It's built to accommodate the traffic. And every neighborhood in the village in the last 27 years has had somebody else build beyond them for a period of time. And I, I appreciate the fact that Brian and Low were the first ones in. They were the first people to buy a lot from me. Dean was the fourth, and the Grady's, you know, weren't long after. And, and we value their residency in our neighborhood. But the truth is, the reality is that you have to build in an orderly and sequential fashion, and it won't be, I don't think, but, you know, Brian, second Brian's comments are accurate. The next recession could hit, we can't predict timelines. But I don't think it'll take us five years to get to Bus, but if it's a year or two, it, it again is very similar to the park issue in that it gives the village and the school district time to figure out that, that sewer shed that's going west and south down Bus. We wouldn't even be able to design into a gradient right now, because we don't know it. And we built our east-west connections. I built three of them. It's not my fault they didn't get extended. You know, I shouldn't be asked to do it a fourth time.
Part of the school's plat is to have those three roads, or have a right of way so that the three roads can connect to what'll eventually be London then. So, and that'll be in the next two years, because that's when they're, or theoretically that's, it's available to be built, I guess, because that's when their plat, or when the school will be built, 2021 will be done. Right?
I think that, when I heard it was built in 20 and opened in 21?
Yeah.
I think. Is that right?
So what roads will they connect?
Morning Dove?
So, the district, I believe, has proposed a north-south header street that's at their far eastern limits that would run up and ultimately to London. Yeah, okay. What I'm saying is this road connection, we move that, you know, to wherever we have to. That's the other reason to wait just a bit on plating the sixth ad until I know exactly where their road lands and where their pipe comes up the east side of Bus and where their path goes. Because presently, they don't have a proposal for a path to connect to mine that's on the south side of Morning Dove, all the way across their plat. Their path connection is shown down here, that Pheasant Run, and then like a private internal driveway that goes down to the middle school. But we built our stuff to the bus limits once here, three times.
Do you see any way around not having the heavy traffic on Damascus, Andrew? Out of your, your creativity lines?
I've thought a lot about it, Sarah, and, you know, for the short term, I don't. And I think it's cost prohibitive and excessive to demand that we build an 1,800-foot-long temp. Or it's not feasible to build a permanent, because we just don't know what to engineer yet, in terms of, you know, the things I mentioned.
The other thing with a temp, I mean, what's preventing just residents from using it? It's not really built for that.
Right, and, and relief can occur with connectivity to the east, connectivity to the west and south, if we can find the political means to accomplish it. Then residents can come and go there, the smaller vehicles can come and go. The town board, at the same time that they said no to the connections, you were, we thought there was hope for an agreement, and the talk was that construction traffic would be limited, because they don't want the heavy equipment on their roads. But then that never even, you know, got to that level, because the, the permits weren't issued for the connection at all.
Mike, is the, I have two questions. One is if only Damascus Road was used, do you think that's going to present issues? Or do you agree with Andrew that he feels that, that it should be built to withstand that traffic?
Damascus has been designed to handle, you know, it's a heavier-built road. It was designed with heavier pavement, thicker pavement, and it's a wide cross section. But, you know, there will be construction equipment, you know, that's the only way in.
When our stuff tends to stay there, you know, like I said before, we will, when we push Damascus north and start building this first phase, I'll rock a yard up there and leave it. It's not like I'm taking it in and out all the time. I have, I have equipment that stays in West Lawn, Fourth Ad. It's not, we're not loading and hauling constantly. Other contractors do more of that. We're, we're very conscious about the cost of moving a machine. So this, this stuff lives in kind of trouble.
You already have the equipment there, right?
It's central. It's folded, right? Yeah, it's all there.
Andrew, do you see coming together to figure out a timeline of when we might be able to see London taken to Bus Road? That maybe that we would know in two years it would be built, and that would give the school time, and residents would know, okay, there's, there's an end in sight to this, that, you know, that we could agree on there'd be a time for it?
I think that's an integral part of the negotiation that occurs between the preliminary plat and final plat and post-final plat approval. Well, it, it, in the interim between preliminary and final plat, where, where we work out the technical details and dot the i's, cross the t's, and timelines can be discussed in that process.
Do you see that potentially you could take London all the way in conjunction with the school building there, north, south, to connect Pheasant Run, Morning Dove, and Red Hawk? That maybe work that in conjunction together so the, the connections make sense, and then we establish an east-west at the same time as that? Do you think that maybe we could negotiate?
You know, I, I think that's something that, that we have to be discussing, planning, engineering, as we move west through the rock profile and meet the inverted elevations of their utility and the alignments of their streets, and get the data that we need to come to specific planning. So yes, I do think that, you know, we could try to coordinate our timelines. My push, if your direction is west. My push, if your direction is north, then, then we go north. But we, we can push that planning and engineering cooperatively. And my, I'll just leave it at that.
Can we cover that in developer's agreement?
Right, but that's just for the confines of fifth edition. I wouldn't extend London outside of that, or could London-
Could. No, I, I think the developer's agreement is germane to the Fifth Ad, the West Lawn. I think there's an ongoing dialogue about cooperative planning, which we've always done. We've, we've, we've never ultimately said no. It's just about timing. And to do it all upfront is, is not only economically burdensome, extremely burdensome, it also isn't the right time, because we don't have the plan in play to, to accommodate that. And I already gave away all of 2018 and shoved you into the, you know, the fourth quarter here in the early of 2019, and you're giving away too much time and too much market.
Unless I, I don't mean to speak for you, but I don't think she meant that, or if it was in the developer agreement, it had to be done right away. It's the idea of having something in the developer agreement that lays out what you're, what you're talking about in some kind of, yes, it's our attempt to do this, or this is the schedule we're going to attempt to follow. I mean, it, it kind of encapsulates the whole discussion here.
Yeah, and I'm open to that, something that would be similar to the terms of a letter of intent.
That's what we're doing at the park, right?
Yeah.
Basically.
Right, right. And the other-
And, and they, they call it time, because the frontage is along the park.
And the other question before I forget him is, Mike, have we ever required another developer to put in a construction road or road?
None of that, Mike. We've got construction entrances. We've acquired easements where, you know, grading beyond their property, we've acquired things that were, you know, extraneous to their property and special conditions, but yeah, this would, this would be the exceptional, you know, as far as being 1,800 feet.
So Lee, is there a way to coordinate developer's agreements that the road, London to Bus and the north-south on the school would occur concurrently?
Well, okay, that would entail us talking to the school and saying, okay, here's what we're trying to do here. Both sides should be a little more cooperative with us, because they need something from us. I don't mean to say that in a bottom-line way, but, and so I think it's, it's possible. Now, you know, it could very well be that the schools just look, just not interested in getting involved in that, but we can certainly try to come up with language. We've been pretty creative with other developments.
Have we done a developer's agreement with the school yet?
Not yet. We're in the process of, we did one for Coliseum promo, and they know it's, they know it's coming.
Right. So, are you done? I'm sorry.
Uh, for right now, yeah.
Okay. So, you said that you can't do the sixth edition because of the utilities? That's where you're heading north on Damascus? Because of the utilities?
Yeah, that's where everything is.
So there's nothing to the north, like off of Gaston, utility-wise? It's just all coming from fourth edition?
The path north is simpler. But it's, it's not heading to anything. You know, that's, that's where, the western path is where the subcommittees and the planning commission and everybody had directed us, we want our push.
Right.
But it, it's, because the 12-inch water main's through there. The easement's in place. And, you know, I'd like to add, we can't start paying back that water main that's accruing interest daily until I can start selling lots.
Right. So could there be a construction? How far is it from?
It's not a lot better. It's 1,200 feet. It's still a significant-
Long, right.
Piece of road.
It's a road that we don't have full annexation either, so it's, it doesn't, like you said, it doesn't really go to maybe a place where you guys, your construction equipment suppliers would be heading to the north? I think so.
I think Bus is the better path, if, if you want me to choose one. I, I think that is the one, even though it's further, it makes the most sense to push that way.
Sounds like the largest discussion point is just, you know, alleviating some of the traffic and, you know, this memo that Brian Grady provided caught me by a little surprise, because conversations with the town up until just recently, the residents don't want it, the town supervisors don't want it. And I understand Chris Hampton was at the planning commission meeting, and I would say, can someone elaborate, like what has changed and is it actually?
It, it hasn't changed.
Okay.
He didn't speak at all. He just handed us the-
I, I asked the question, John, would they, would they agree to it? And he didn't really, and we're hoping he would elaborate. He didn't.
You talking about item four on, on Brian's list there?
Right, yep.
It has not changed.
I don't know where that information comes from, but it's different than what they-
Yeah, it's all indication. I mean, it, it does make sense, and, you know, driving your kid around, you drive him to a dead end, and he, I mean, I've been asking ever since, for years myself, and it always ends up where their residents don't want it, they don't want curb and gutter, they want, they, they built him a dead end cul-de-sac, and they don't want them through traffic. It, it does make-
It, it does make sense and I agree a hundred percent, but I just don't see how it's going to happen.
Fastest way is to get to London to Bus.
It sounds like it.
And perhaps give some sort of alleviation for emergency vehicles through a path system.
Well, and even if doesn't run, and Morning Dove did connect, it still wouldn't help necessarily alleviate the traffic going north on Damascus Trail to get to the construction at this point anyway. And the, the construction equipment, even if we did connect with Metal Lark, wouldn't go on the town street to get to, would it?
My presumption is if we were fortunate enough to get a permit, there'll be a weight restriction put on those streets. I don't know that, but I would anticipate that.
Yeah, and the engineering report from the town-
It would provide residential relief. It always made sense to me that two schools should be able to connect via Morning Dove Drive, just if it's people driving their kids back. It would alleviate traffic south on Damascus. Not heavy traffic, but some traffic beats no traffic.
So a few things that I'm thinking about here on the path, best path forward, which in the grand scheme of things, there's a big plan here. And I think there's some details just to be worked out, in my, in my opinion. I think that this is a great plan and I think that this is a great direction for the village to go. But there's just these details of, I would see then, is it Nightingale or is it Metal Lark that comes from the north? Metal Lark?
Metal Lark.
So either leave the right-of-way, dedicate the right-of-way, or stub the street? And then to get London to occur concurrently with the school property would be what I would see as a compromise among guessers. I'm, I'm not sure how anyone else-
No, I'm, I'm with you. I like what Brian said earlier about stubbing that and being consistent. I like that going up toward, towards Metal Lark for future. Man, it would be great to be able to get London in there right now, but I, I get where you're coming from. It's, it's basically impossible because of what the breaking through all the rock, as Mike has pointed out, and the utilities having to come across. So what is the solution to that? And I get where the residents are coming from big time. It's a tough one.
And the unknown of the school and where they're, how that's going to fall together, you know, makes that challenging to-
Any other comments from trustees or questions?
I'm just curious what you guys think about the Nightingale. Do you still leave it as the outlet as proposed? Or to Ryan's point earlier, stub it in?
How would you even make that a feasible street?
There's 1.7 acres there to put in. And, you know, the, the conversations with Mike and MSA and the subcommittees is that dedicate the outlot with the language that's appropriate on the face of the plat that allows us to do whatever you choose to. There's enough room between the basins if you want a 10% grade street. Kind of what it gets to.
I think we were saying something about using retaining walls and things like that to-
Yeah, without cutting back and using the stormwater management on the site. It may need that. We'd have to look at that carefully.
If it was just left an outlet, does it basically, is it, so the street's here and the land is here type of thing?
Well, I mean, the, the way the engineering works out is Wellington is just significantly higher than, than Nightingale. And, you know, we'll build, we'll, we'll build Wellington and give the outlot to the village. And there is the potential of connecting that if you want that type of a street. I think you might be building a hazard. If you do it. I think Metal Lark makes sense. If you'd rather have a street than a path, we'll drop a lot, design it, put a street there. But I, I would not want it to preclude being able to continue moving forward. You know, that's a, that's a minor change that can be accommodated pretty quickly.
Would having Metal Lark, if it were ever to go through with can bear a circle, like being right there, it kind of, it's like an end of Metal Lark and then can bear a circle.
I wasn't thrilled with that offset. It's, it's on a little residential connection street. So it's, if it were out on BB or Anne or something, I wouldn't like that short of an offset here. It, it doesn't alarm me too much. But it was one of the reasons I, I didn't like stubbing that street also is because of that short offset.
Mike, thoughts on that?
As far as the offset from curb?
I think with the, yeah, with it being a local street, it's, it's within all the, it's within the board.
Okay. Any other discussion on this?
Sorry, can I comment? Because Andrew did mention after, just briefly. So when we were sitting down with Andrew, like before he purchased, you know, we said, we didn't want to be on like the main road going in. And, you know, we said that, and we talked about the additional connections that were going to happen. And, you know, I, we just assumed that was going to happen because you're the man, you're making all this stuff. It didn't happen. It wasn't your fault, you know, but people who are living on Damascus didn't sign up to be on the road. Where we have 100-plus, 80 all coming down through it, all that construction. We did not know it was going to be like that. Didn't sign up for that. The, the vehicle, construction vehicle traffic, yes, Andrew's stuff could stay in the fifth edition while they're developing it. But it's all the dump trucks. There were weekends where we had 100-plus dump trucks, Saturday, Sunday, all day long, constantly bringing dirt in. And that's on the weekends. And not to mention during the day, there's all sorts of other trucks that have to come in and out of the neighborhood. And it's not only the big earth movement, it's dump trucks, cement trucks when the homes start going. It's a lot of trucks. I, I have no idea it was going to be nearly as loud. The idea that a bike path can be the backup entrance to 180 homes in the event of a major disaster is completely unacceptable, totally unacceptable. First off, could be winter time, there could be a massive pile of snow there. And don't forget, the state Capitol burned down. It had, it had first-rate water system, but all the water froze. It, it didn't work out. We need a real road to be able to get into our neighborhood if there's a major disaster, the connection to Bus Road. I understand there'll be costs involved in that. I mean, why not let Andrew sell some more lots, go 110 homes in this? You know, there's definitely a lot of cost people are paying to buy these lots. There's a lot of revenue that the developer's going to make by selling 100 or 110 homes. And some money has to be spent to build like a temporary construction road in order to guarantee the safety of the residents who have paid a lot of money for those lots and to continue to pay a, a lot of money for property taxes. And it doesn't matter how much they pay, they're village residents. Their public safety should be the number one priority. So that's what I have to say.
All right, thanks, Brian. Anything else from the board? Any other comments? Otherwise, we have discuss and consider requests from Homburg Equipment for approval of preliminary plat for less, West Lawn, fifth edition. This was approved by the Plan Commission. Certainly, there's consideration that we've talked about that may be ironed out between the preliminary and final plat to address citizens' concerns, particularly about different ways of getting in and out of that area. Consideration from the board?
I'll make a motion to approve with the conditions laid out and the staff recommendations in our packet. In addition, I would like to see Metal Lark stubbed as discussed and the right-of-way dedicated in Outlet 11. And London Avenue to be constructed concurrently with the school's North-South connector street. I think that, I guess I can discuss that when somebody second.
I'll second.
Motion second.
The reason to take London as part of the school concurrently, I think, will get us the fastest way possible to Bus Road. That can be engineered together, so it makes the most sense. Yet it's not pushing London to be done immediately, but majority of that neighborhood's traffic would then flow on London eventually. Because we're talking Phase 1 would be probably 20, 25 lots in Phase 1.
Oh, yeah.
So all 100 houses aren't going to be built at once. It'll be phased. And then London will come in during one of those phases is what I would envision.
Any other discussion?
Can we, I don't know if it'd be a separate motion, but can we revisit again with the town if there is?
We do have a joint meeting coming up, so we can certainly put on the agenda, have a discussion again with, with the town, certainly. I noted that here.
John?
Do encourage village residents to come to something like that and speak there too, so your voice can be heard through, to the town.
Yes, Lee.
I would urge, first of all, thank you for coming, but I would urge you to direct some focus at the town board. I mean, they are the ones who are holding up these connections. It's as simple as that. It's not that the village board is not concerned about safety or any such thing. And, you know, I think, I understand that comments get real heated, but by the same token, direct that anger or direct that frustration where it ought to be. You know, you, we can tell Homburgs, go and get a connection. Well, this was done in 2013. They went to the town and they said no.
Yeah, I completely agree with you.
Okay, well, just, but this is done now. And I, I mean, I think that direct your passion to the town and get them to change that position.
Because that'll free up a lot of areas for safety too, which is all everybody's concerned. It really is.
I also think that Mr. Homburg should be going to the town and rallying the troops too, because this is his development. This isn't our development. This is his development. He's the one that's going to build the houses and turn it into 55 million dollars.
It becomes our village, so it is ours.
Well, but it stops at Sandhopper. They're the ones that, he's the developer. And he's asking us to rally the troops and get the town to say yes to, was it Nightingale? How is that our responsibility?
We'll, we'll put it on the, in the agenda of their joint meeting with the town, as we did the last June meeting. And we'll continue doing that going forward and we'll certainly ask citizens to participate as much as, as they're willing and able to.
September 17th?
Yes, thank you.
Here at this, at Village Hall of Fame.
Yeah. And it'll be posted as all meetings. We have a motion and a second with conditions as well as considerations to be ironed out between the preliminary and final plat and potentially incorporated into the agreement, developer's agreement. Is there any further discussion? Having heard then, none, then all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. The next item then is discuss and consider a request from Homburg Equipment for the approval for rezoning lots 380 through 479, West Lawn, fifth edition, to single family residential lots and Outlots 11 through 13 as park and open space rural holdings district. And this again goes hand in hand with all the discussion we've had thus far.
Is there conditions of the rezoning at all?
Sure, with the staffing word.
I'll make a motion to approve the rezoning of lots 380 through 479 of West Lawn, a state's fifth edition, to single family residential and Outlots 11 through 13 as park and open space from current rural holding district with staff conditions. But does that change Outlot 11 since we're stubbing it out for our previous motion? Metal Lark is the new stuff. Nightingale is just the dead- Right, but it's Outlot 12 was- Oh, 12.
It would still be an outlaw. If we put a street on it, well, dedicate it as right of way at that point.
Maybe come two hours.
And then it won't be, and even though there won't be 100 lots because we're getting rid of one, it's still okay to rezone it, all of them?
I second.
Okay.
So when we're done, we just leave?
If you'd want.
If you'd like.
You can stay and watch the rest of the meeting if you'd like.
Enjoy the rest of the night.
May you allow me to say something before I leave? Just a minute? Okay, we've been focusing on passable thing and impassable. And I understand that. Talking to the other people on the other side of the road that using that thing and no one to connect, it sounds like impassable for you. Why don't we focus on the passable thing? The school construction has, is going to start. We vote for it. It's going on. Why don't we wait until we can cooperate with the school, until we proceed with the fifth edition? That I think that we can do. I just hope that I came in as, with a concern. If you approve that, and then we will linger to one year, two years, go along with the first phase of the fifth edition, second phase, we resident, we have to live with that. We know that many unhappy neighbors. I don't come in with anger, even passion. I come in with a concern and I walk out with a worry. I would like you to think about it.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion with, and second with some conditions, conditions of staff. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries and we're zoning. Item C then is actually moving through a different development.
Oh, I have one question. On the, on the preliminary plat in the legend, it says found Dane County Aluminum Monument? Or is that what that says? What is that? What does that mean?
Survey.
Survey mark.
Oh, it's not saying fun or exciting, like you found something?
We found, we found an iron stake in the ground.
They found rock is what they found. Limestone.
Those rare pennies would have been nice.
Maybe next time.
Maybe next time. Thank you. I appreciate all the time and consideration. Thank you.
Robert, do you want to say anything? You said, I think we've all heard it, but we'll give your, your minutes of thinking.
With respect to Andrew, I think we've been to about 35 to 40 minute meetings. So we're just here to answer questions. We're accepted all of the conditions set forth in the planner's report and the, and all of the issues that need to be resolved in the engineer's report. And so, and the recommenda, and the recommendations of the Planning Commission, that we'll answer any questions or present if you'd like.
I do have just a couple of questions. How was the fence side, so the sidewalk is being eliminated from the one side?
And the fence is-
And the fence is gone?
Yeah, based on the comments from, from the last meeting, it was decided, at least that's, that's how I understood that the fence was no longer needed and as well as a portion of the sidewalk on the west side of Bus Road from Lot 56, I believe, north, or 57.
Yeah, it's that last line. And then so that our parks committee can start to make appropriate plans to build structures in the park? What, I know you can't look into the future and predict exactly what'll happen, but what is the phasing? exactly what'll happen, but what is the phasing that you discussed?
There's no phasing.
No phasing, so?
So, far, the, the whole neighborhood is, is, is proposed as one face, except for the lots, uh, closer to Bus Road.
So, we can start to put those improvements in our plan. So, are all lots available to be purchased, or what lots do you think are going to go first?
That would, I guess, that would be a decision by the owners, but, but it's one face, so, so I, I would have to assume that all the lots, all the roads would be built at, at the same time unless, unless there is a, a situation in which phasing is required.
We'll clarify that in the developer agreement, so if they're, if they're changing from a one face or not.
Yeah, I, I don't know if all, so the roads will hopefully start construction in October. It clearly won't be done this year. The hope would be that the build-out is completed next year. The worst-case scenario would be there would be a road built the following year, you know, I mean, based on how quickly the build-out happens, so. I, we can try to answer that question.
I mean, it's not, I just wanna think about our planning ahead. Um, I'll make a motion to approve Menono Grove Development Inc. for approval of the final plat of Shady Grove.
I second.
Motion second. Is there any further discussion?
Oh, uh, can I modify to add that the staff, yeah, the conditions laid out in the memo?
Yeah, I modify mine.
Thank you.
Any further discussion then on that motion, albeit adjusted? Having heard then, all those in favor then?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, patience, guys. Sorry to move you up to the, to the ones. We'll certainly miss you guys.
You'll be okay.
All right, Madison United Rugby. Again, this is approved at the Plan Commission. Gang from the rugby and their consultants came and actually presented that to the resolution. I don't know if you wanna say anything about this. This is more of a, hasn't been through thirty committees.
I'm pretty, I was just gonna look at the submittal package, but my Google Docs isn't loading. Pretty sure it was August 2009.
Well, yeah.
That we had the first submittal approved. We're really glad to be back ten years later. Wanted to show two things here. The first one is the overall landscape view, um, of the site as intended. You can see I'm drawing above here. What's not shown on there is the entrance, the utility and personnel entrance here. That would not be, that's basically just designated for staff, and our, our personnel would not be any sort of regular traffic, other than maintenance equipment, deliveries and such. So, this is the big, pretty new one, just a little bit over there, a bit better. So, this would be what you would see, um, basically from the parking lot, if you're close enough, from not walking directly in, but from the parking lot area looking northeast. We're, uh, we're really glad to be here. I mean, we've been through a lot. Paul here was part of the very first group that was, built the land. My dad is here as well, who's been a part of it for over ten years. I moved back to the area about eight years ago. And we spent about three years understanding what we're gonna be able to afford and putting this plan together that we can stand in front of you and tell you, "We can afford this and we're, we're gonna do this." So, with a little bit more donations, but not, uh, nothing more than we haven't had to deal with in ten years, so.
When did you say you'd start construction?
We don't have a, our, our goal is to start construction as soon as we can.
Today was the review date for the approval on the state. So, once that's accomplished, they've also hired a contractor to go ahead and do the work once those plans are approved.
Yeah, so we have, I actually got a smile from Steve Gausman today that he could, he could dig this fall. We got steel rectors that said they could show up in November, so. Our goal would be to have this structure upright so that guys who are willing to help out with the construction within our organization that said they would help out, maybe we can actually hold them to that in the wintertime, as opposed to you get to springtime, you don't have time to wait, and you gotta, you gotta go. So, that's a goal, to, to allow ourselves a chance to, to have people help out and volunteer stuff, but it, I, I don't, I don't know if that's realistic. Might just allow us a little longer time to spend refining things with the contractor and not push them. Our goal is to open next fall, might not be till it's too cold out, but. It was Clubhouse 2020. Paul led that back in 2016, and it might actually happen, if we're wrong.
I am really excited about how Bakken Park is becoming such a central area with the Miracle League that'll be coming, um, and your clubhouse, uh, the splash pad and shelter. I do, Mike, um, someone from MSA presented at Parks Committee last week, and we were talking about the drainage plan that they had come up with for the splash pad. So, I just wanna make sure that they're all gonna coordinate together.
Yes.
Okay.
In this particular building, you know, we, we really reviewed a clubhouse back '09 or so, and so, we have pretty sparse comments here because they, a lot of the systems are in place for this, all of them.
Any other questions?
I make a motion to approve, uh, Madison United Rugby's approval of a site plan amendment for approximately seventy-nine-hundred square foot clubhouse.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Good luck with the states. All right. I'll move back to unfinished business. Discuss the Village Board priority list.
John, are you putting Paula's email?
Oh, yeah. I forwarded it to public service, so, yes, sorry. Side note for the rugby, the Chamber sent through a plug for it. I submitted it to Lisa to include in the notes, and Melissa just reminded me of it. In fact, I have it right here, so I would actually physically give it to her, too. So, now we'll move on to priorities.
Sure. So, that is a continuation of the discussion and, and looking into, uh, the priority and then specifically what's being currently worked on that's related to that priority. And this, this week, we're looking at parks recreation and open space, and, um, this isn't to be, you know, all-inclusive and say this is all that's going on, but this is a good overview of most of the goals, objectives that Sean, his staff, and the Parks Committee are, are working on. And then, um, following that is what, um, people on the board submitted under that priority, and then from there, just, you know, questions to ask yourself is, you know, are, are the things that have been worked on sufficient? Are there suggestions for staff to discuss during review time or anything that you'd like discussed or worked on in the more short term?
I mean, I just wanted to reiterate a little bit about what I wrote in my priorities for parks and open space, because I think they really are a vital piece of public infrastructure, and I also think they're an important part of economic, economic growth. When we took a tour of the new Summit Credit Union, they had gym space, they had a meditation room. When you walk around Commerce Park, there's, uh, people from Johnson Health walking near the pond, and I think employers are looking for that, to have happy, healthy employees. And I think, you know, we're making really great strides, expanding the bike path, we have Miracle League, all the plans at Bakken Park, potential for twenty-two acres, and I think, moving forward, I want to continue to make that a priority and even kind of bring that into a potential facility study that would talk about our recreation activities. Moving forward into the future, um, you know, we'll have a senior population that's going to be growing. I mean, that's a nationwide thing that, um, you know, the baby boom, boom generation is growing, so making sure that we're, we have areas for all ages to gather together. I think it's an important part of our community, so that's why I rated parks and open space high in my priorities.
Any other comments on this?
I had, I had it in there, too, for main, mine was mainly just making sure that we have amenities for our citizens, because just talking to people, it's one of the things that I heard from, especially from younger families, that they wanna have spaces where they could actually stay in Cottage Grove, not have to leave to go to another community to enjoy things.
And I'm glad you brought up the facility, facilities you study, because I have that down as well. And in my comments, I wanted to, wasn't necessarily Parks and Rec, because I think they do a great job, um, of providing activities for our community, but I think there also needs to be a space where, um, our residents can go, and we don't currently have that for all ages, and so, I don't know if it's possible to look into a community center or something like of that nature. I don't know if, Matt, you were able to look in the possibility? I know when we did the TIDS, it might not have been, um, one of the, um, possibilities to use money to do that, or if it was structured that way or not, but.
Yeah, it would have to be approved in the project plan for the TIDS and adopted by the, um, the other taxing jurisdictions. So, it's certainly possible for a future, um, a future amendment, but the last amendments we did are gonna be the last until one of the, either, either our value increase, our equalized value increases enough to allow for another amendment, or we close a TID. So, um, not necessarily that, that far into the future, but it's, it's a possibility.
Right. Um, especially since we are going to be having, um, a lot more single-family homes. That means more families and more kids, and, um, and then apartments, which also, um, could mean a senior population as well. And so, I think it's time that we start providing people with the resources to stay in our community instead of going elsewhere. Agreed.
And I think the facilities discussion, I think that's the fourth.
Yep.
Priority, so. We're not gonna go through them all, but it, you know, that brings us up to budget time, covers the top four. We can, we can continue if you guys would like, but I, it's been a good exercise, at least, to discuss the, you know, the top three or four.
I think so. I like how you laid out everything for us to review. Just, just seeing how much work that, um, the staff and departments are doing is really nice to see.
That's awesome.
Any other comments on this party?
So, the next one is the facilities?
I think so. I don't have the list in front of me, but.
I think so.
And the fifth, the fifth one is, um, I, I think with, uh, I wanna say it's tax or tax stability, so I think that ties right into getting into the budget, so that's, that's kind of a self-explanatory.
All right. Thanks, Matt. Next item is, uh, yes, return to the Flynn Hall Agreement. So, I met with, um, Chris Hampton. We approved a two-year extension or a two-year cycle of the agreement. Chris came back with five, so I'm coming back to, and I indicated that was the only thing that the board approved, was just re-upping for two years at a time. So, my question to the board is, do you wanna do anything but, but two years? Do you wanna consider three years? Do you wanna just say it two and, and leave at that? And more than likely, I don't know what they'll, what they'll do.
Nice to, nice to see that he's negotiating.
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to negotiate.
Well, I.
But yes, it is nice. I agree.
Was he okay with the, I don't mind listing what we're paying for, the utilities, insurance, and that stuff?
Yeah, the only thing he added to that was the ancillary maintenance things, like, maybe you should put in there light bulbs, because we do pay somehow for that, and furnace filters and towels, which aren't apparently in the agreement with the folks that clean the towels bags. Their minimal cost, because you divide them over three, you know, three entities that are in agreement, but I would just list that in the, in the edits that we provide and, you know, see if that's, is that, that's gonna be amenable. He didn't seem to have an issue with that.
Did he provide any compelling reasons of why he wants to stay with five?
Uh, so that we don't have to have a discussion for five years.
Plus, that's what the contract, yeah, called for, right?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, those other few changes, too.
Yeah, those are minor.
And it's been five years all along.
Right, yeah, so.
But I think that we, we need to have the facilities you study to really understand what our community needs, more so than entering into another five years with, um, this agreement. That's why, um, had, I, that's why I did the motion for two years.
Okay.
Yeah, with all the developments that were, you know, approved or preliminary tonight, I mean, that could change our, our facilities needs moving forward. I don't, you know, I don't know what, it would be nice to have a study to guide us in that decision, you know? So, I, I don't know if we would entertain three years and say, call that a compromise. I don't know.
That's what I'm throwing out there. The other thing to consider is, and this is not part of the agreement, is to actually have board members on that committee rather than citizen members, um, which is something I'm opposed outside of this as well, and just look for two volunteers. It's only meeting once a year typically, unless there's something comes up. But that way, we, we're, uh, being a little more proactive in anything that's discussed.
Since it's a, is it, it's a joint committee, right?
Yeah.
So, then, does the town need to also approve that the village has?
They already have two of their town supervisors on the committee, so.
I think they're the ones who asked us to, to also have two board people, and that's kind of been the problem, is that we really haven't had great communication from the people that were doing it.
Yeah, so I would definitely coincide that with this. So, when we met last, last week, we had one citizen member from Cottage Grove show up, myself, for the village, and Troy showed up for the Lions, so, and then Chris, and no other supervisor showed up, so it's, I think it tells you a little bit, too, as far as how they feel about it. So, I'm leaving up to you guys. We, right now, we have an approval for two years. If you wanna go back to them with something different, I would need some sort of direction.
I'll make that motion. Three years.
Okay. Uh, we have a motion for.
A second?
Three years, okay. Yeah, a second. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, um, new business, discuss operator permits, licenses for July 2019 through June 2020. Mia and Pete, Jennifer Frost, Quincy Rimmish, I'm sorry, I wasn't that correctly, Drew Stevenson, Kristen Rinke. Chief is.
Put him back in the corner.
You'll work back there?
No. Yeah.
Yeah, they're fine.
They're fine.
I'll make a motion that we approve the operating license permit applications for year 2019 through June 2020 for, um, Lania, Jennifer, Quincy, Drew, and Kristen.
All right, is there a second? Motion second. Any further discussion?
I just was curious why the, um, the look of it was different, just.
He had a different opposite, did background checks, so it came back a little bit different.
Okay.
And it was all on one, so that's why I put it all on. And it was all on one, so that's why I put it all on one. I, not like the, I usually do them individually.
Right, okay, thank you.
So if somebody would have fallen down there, we would have no problem. We're all good. So we have a motion second. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Item 7B, new business, discuss and consider resolution 2019-10, a resolution authorizing staff to take all required action regarding the village sale of lot two, CSM 151972, and closing transaction with KTW Enterprises LLC, DVA Madison Window Cleaning. So double secret probation there to know what that is. Any comments?
Um, this is, we approved the developer agreement in July and now the resolution and the power of attorney will be, we need approved by the board. And then that's what we send to the title company and that way the closing can occur. And it's currently scheduled for sometime at the end of August, end of August 30.
Any questions for Lee on this? This is fairly standard stuff we do.
Yeah, this is, that's a good point, John. We do this every time we have a transaction and that way we're able to go to the transaction, basically pick up the check and bolt it there. And usually there aren't many other issues.
And they accept my signature that way, otherwise.
Otherwise, forget about it.
Couple times that they show a driver's license.
I make a motion that we approve resolution 2019-10, resolution authorizing staff to take all required action regarding village sale of lot two, CSM 151972, and closing transaction with KTW Enterprises.
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Lee, do you have anything else with that?
No.
Okay. Thank you. All right, then we move on to reports of village boards, commissions, and committees. Starting off with public works. JJ is still awake as well.
Most of the updates, except that the committee told me the work got approved by, but its language changed, allowed me to do less work. So.
Sorry, buddy.
Yeah, well, it was a good discussion and hopefully the village still comes out ahead with us doing a little work on it, so sidewalk work is remaining. Otherwise, we had some direction on some of our vacant properties and the direction I was to give to the property owners. That has since been followed and taken care of. We discussed possible crosswalk option for Cottage Grove Road. Kind of very agree. I think we settled pretty much on location, probably bring something more formal up, and then it was kind of, um, what do you want to do within the scope of it? So we'll get some engineer's perspective on that. There's an update on the compost that I had a proposal from Purple Cow to accept it, our estimated amount of compost. Still working on getting it there issue. It's a significantly longer drive to the site that they identified. But there may be contracting the truck as an option, so we're still looking at that. And actually the truck traffic issue in Commerce Park for the time being seems to have been at least taken care of with just a sign. So that one we didn't really discuss or go into because as of right now, it's cool. So that was.
Uh, the other thing, we did talk about the solar panels. We've got, again, some input from engineering on that as far as what the life expectancy of the roof would be. And we'll need to figure that out as far as what the load would be for those if we were to put them up there. So there's more homework essentially for that. Update on the bike path, everybody can see that it's, it's looking, looking pretty good as far as connecting up to at least all the improvements. They're moving dirt right now, making it pretty, and I think they'll be paving pretty soon, hopefully.
Okay, I have not heard their most recent schedule, but I believe they, because they have been doing this sub, so I think they're going to be, most likely try to coordinate all of it.
I've seen people walking on it.
Yes.
Not biking on it yet.
And not construction workers either.
No, right, yes.
It'll be great to have for the, for the kids when, when school starts too, so that's going to be wonderful. Uh, there is another little bike path thing too with the reconstruction of Cottage Grove Road. We do have an on-ramp that we're putting in and extending the bike path from in front of the church to Southern Grange. Again, I think it's going to be a nice improvement to connecting, more connections for bikes and walkers, et cetera. Or strollers, it's easier when you get that double going, to run it on there. So that's, that's going in as we, as we speak, or they were paving today. So that's going on. And then we'll do some striping stuff on there too for the rest of the road or bike path stuff on the remaining. So that's the only other thing.
Oh, I don't know. You guys talked about the update on Cottage Grove Road. I saw there was something new laid. How many more steps are there?
Well, if Mother Nature cooperates, they will be putting the whole top layer on tomorrow. And then as of this morning, the plan was to pave the bike path portionless. So fingers crossed it stops raining for a little bit and we can go.
Thanks.
Yeah, Mother Nature has not been kind, let's on that. Community Development Authority, thanks JJ.
Uh, we met on August 12th at 5:30. Wasn't really a long meeting. There, there, we didn't have a heck of a lot to discuss, but we did get an overview of the Mid-American Economic Development Corp meeting best practices conference that there was. We had some input by Aaron and then Kyle too for that. And there was some discussion in December. There's another conference in Chicago, I believe, right? Where trustees can go if, if you'd like, but it's, it's for meeting developers that are people that are looking at coming into areas and developing. So it'd be a great chance for someone to, to meet people that are looking.
I think they call them site selectors, right?
Select site selectors, yeah. Where they select the sites to, to build in. It's something I'm actually considering myself going. And then we did do a little bit of update on what activities are in the village right now. Got an update by both Aaron and Matt on that. That was pretty much it. We were talking about future agenda items for that. That's going to be a lot of the stuff that we're, we're going through right now. It's going to sooner or later come back through the CDA, so really isn't a lot to talk at this point, so. And next meeting is going to be the second Monday of September, whatever that day is.
Uh, the ninth.
Okay, there you go. At 5:30.
Thanks, Jeff. Next up is the Flynn Hall Committee. Made reference to this already, we met on August 12th. Approved the meeting minutes from previous, uh, meeting from prior, year prior. There was no public there, so there was no concern. The historical society, Lions were representative along with the village of town. We talked about the agreement and I relayed the discussion there as well as Chris and I met separately prior to this to talk about it. So I said it was going to be on this agenda for this meeting, for discussion. 2019 reviewed the budget and the use of funds. Evidence fairly consistent to the prior years as far as that goes. They also discussed building needs for 2020. The Lions are going to do some, a bit of curbing on one of the sides of the current driveway that goes up into the back. And the town is considering paving part of the back that is currently gravel and doing some work back there for 2020. But then, of course, we'll have to go through their budget cycle as well. But the curb will, will go in, I think this year, right? Yeah, so that will help some water problems for some of the residents that are on the backside of that. So I think that'll be a, a very nice thing. Looked at the budget for 2020, going to stick it at, it's at 6,500 if it has been at. And that was pretty much it. Anything else, Troy, that I missed?
That's it.
Okay.
Covered it.
Utility Commission.
Okay, Utility Commission met on August 14th at 5:15. We talked about the water tower lighting, which is really exciting because it's getting really close. Staff cut back brush. Equipment was scheduled to be delivered. Do you know if it happened?
Actually, an update, as of last Thursday, the contractor came out and got the base section of the pole installed and did a lot of the work trenching in the lines. So I called him anyway Friday and said, hey, let me know when you're going to fire it up. I want to let people know. So he said it's still a week or two out. They have to let that sit before they do. But it made a lot of progress last Thursday.
Okay, and well, you're going to let us know so we can?
Yes, I want to, yes, I want to have some kind of idea and something we can do and turn it on.
Sure, yeah, I mean, maybe we can get the chamber involved somehow or something.
Would like the contractor to turn on, make sure.
Let us know when we can schedule this.
Yep, absolutely.
And then we also talked about cross connection control. There's some things in your packet and JJ might be able to talk about it a little bit more in detail. Cross connection, we signed a contract with Hydro Core earlier this year. It's about ensuring water safety, that water won't come back through. So they're going to inspect larger users to ensure they have that. But our ordinance does not match what the DNR has laid out as a schedule that's acceptable. So JJ, take it from there.
You nailed it. The first steps, once we had that contract approved, they reviewed our ordinance and just noted that it's got specific language of when we'll do inspections. And they don't like that because we're going to change it with these, when, when they're identified as they're a high hazard, they're going to get, you know, every two years versus what may be in the three. And also, they're already on compliance with our ordinance just because we've had approval from the DNR for four plus years to conduct a residential inspection in conjunction with our meters, which is, so. My recommendation is that we just, and this was consistent, I just, you know, stole this from other places, is to just take out specific years and just clarify the language that you have the right to inspect and have a new policy. It's especially, you know, approved by the DNR, which whatever Hydro Core comes up with also has to be approved by the DNR. So ultimately across all our classes, we'll have something approved in the DNR that's our inspection rate, but then our ordinance doesn't have to specify years because the DNR may change, site may change, and they are policies covered it. And ordinance just very easy to fight that we conduct these inspections.
Gives us the flexibility to inspect as needed as the DNR guides us. And the Utility Commission did approve that.
Yes, I was one for two.
I'll make the motion to approve the language change to ordinance 312-5 cross connection control.
Is there a second? Second, okay. Motion second, is any further discussion, questions? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Can I ask you, Ann or John? I think this is great that it was able to be handled quickly. But is there, is there a general rule of thumb or something for committees to say, well, you know, you don't always have to vote through ordinance or whatever?
That's what we talked about in the last bill of the board meeting.
Yeah.
If it could be handled, it's just a simple.
Yeah. So the board, just to make sure the board's comfortable with that, you know?
Yeah. That was discussed.
I mean, I think that we could have decided to push it to ordinance review as we're about to end.
Ordinance review committee, in my opinion, I mean, wants to get it right, but we also don't want to be a hindrance or a roadblock. So if it can be done at a certain committee level, it still needs to come into board for an approval.
So our next utility meeting, September 11th at 5:15.
Deer Grove EMS Commission.
We met last Thursday. Calls are most even this year versus last year. We are a bit behind, or last month versus a month a year ago. We are a bit behind this year versus last year. Did some minor updates, language only, on Deer Grove EMS position description for the EPT paramedic. Threw that at the attorney and he approved everything of that, so that was approved. We also looked at performance evaluation. Current one seems a bit weak, so we gathered some information. The chief did other area EMS facilities to see how they evaluated their chief and we'll kind of narrow that down to next month then as to, I think it's going to be kind of a combination of a couple of different ones. What else? We started the budget process, I think we'll have that wrapped up next meeting. And they're also going to include a five-year capital budget, just so there's an idea of long, longer term planning. And then the meeting is being moved to Tuesday, the 10th, because the chief and deputy chief are at a conference. They miss anything, Sarah?
No, I guess, I would just add that even though the call volume is down, income and revenue is up.
Yeah.
So, you know, just to kind of even that out. It's not bad.
And last year we were assisting Cambridge, which we're not doing this year. So that's every part of the reason that the volume was up last year too. It was a, you know, a few month contract, they were short staffed, so weren't part of it, but I thought I'd point that out. Any other questions?
Is the interstate issues tamped down? I mean, for a while last year, we had a lot of.
Revocation.
Interstate with the construction.
Oh, you know, there hasn't been any discussion about that. I think it's been a lot better this year.
Okay.
I think they've got more space and I, I haven't heard any complaints from them at all about that, actually.
And that will contribute to obviously the volume too. All right, we covered the planning commission pretty well, thank you. Parks Rec and Forestry.
Okay, so we met on August 15th, so I'm just going to go down a little bit because we do have an item in front of us from Parks Rec and Forestry. The Boy Scout troop, 145, is planning a campout at Fireman's Park. There's some information about it in your packet. It is on September 27th, 2019. They're asking to occupy the Lions Shelter at Fireman's Park. So they're asking that we suspend the park closing hours for that date. It could be 75 to 100 people, so wanted to make sure that the police department chief knew that there would be 75 to 100 people at Fireman's Park on September 27th, in case there.
We had a, a torn off, but.
Okay, all right, great. So that was the one thing that we wanted to make sure that we knew about before approval. So we're planning to have 75 to 100 people, families, portable fire pit, campfire, maybe.
I'll make a motion to suspend ordinance 230-3, standing park closing hours for September 27th, 2019, at Lions Shelter at Fireman's Park.
I'll second that or something. All right, has been motion second. Any further discussion?
That's a lot more turnout than the family camp though.
There's scouts, they live for this.
They could have gone to ours too.
Other than the attendance. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries.
We also talked about Minot Grove Soccer Club and their field reservation policy. We have agreements, of course, with rugby and the school district and then our programming. But Minot Grove Soccer wants to ensure that they could use the soccer fields, have kind of first reservation. So trying to work out, the committee wants to work out an agreement where they would contribute something rather than just using the land for free that they would contribute to the maintenance of or provide some improvement to the parks, you know, benches for teams or, so we're going to continue to work on, on agreements on that. We also.
And you might want to just have Sean give you copies of the ones that exist now.
Sure.
And, you know, maybe that could serve as your outline.
Okay, that's good ideally, thank you. We also got an update on the Bachan Park Shelter and Splash Pad because MSA had been working at the board's direction. at the board's direction on engineering plans for that, so they're working on drainage, there's some really nice renderings in the packet, you know, getting that vision to kind of come together, how that's going to work with Miracle League. There's also a social media update, our Facebook post shares reach have really increased, which I think is great for the programming. Then, there's also in your packet regarding some concerns about park signage, about the park hours and no animals allowed in the parks, and I just wanted to say that there was a process in this, department receives complaints, took an inventory of signs and found that there was a lack of signs in some of the parks, so rather than having inconsistencies in the village to, you know, people might be confused that there's a sign here, but not here, so my pet must be allowed here, so to provide that consistency of enforcing, being able to enforce ordinances throughout the village, and the park staff installed the signs to notify residents of that, so I think that, you know, we set the ordinances and staff followed through in the appropriate kind of decision-making tree to ensure that all the residents knew the rules of the parks, so that's kind of some background on that, I don't know if anyone else has any questions.
I just think it'd be nice to get a heads up, so when people ask you or hit social media, we kind of have a little back channel on that, and maybe a little bit, but I mean, it's, at least the park at the end of my road is right smack there in the middle, so no one's going to miss it, but no one's going to miss it either, it just seems a little unwelcome, but we'll put signs up, but we don't have signs covering every single ordinance, but I kind of get it, it's just nice to have a little bit of heads up with me twice a month, and that way we can kind of explain to neighbors or reply on social media why the signs are up there.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's difficult to distinguish, you know, your daily tasks of carrying out the rules that have been laid out by the board, you know, what every detail is, if, you know, we could revisit the ordinance, but I think it being applied consistently across the village was the goal here, and if a sign isn't visible, then it's not effective.
And just one comment on social media, I think, just be a little bit careful on comments on there, because if there's a particular page and multiple board members are commenting, that can be construed as a meeting.
Yeah.
The other thing is, it also kind of legitimizes, and people then feel that if they have a question, they just go to a random Facebook page, instead of going to either one of the village's official Facebook pages, or going to an official email of a board member or staff for a question, because there's no way of us tracking those, those are all open records technically, and we can't, we couldn't honor an open records request, so.
So like a Freedom of Information Act request, how is that, is there any precedence on that on, for social media?
It's, do you want me, sure, it's evolving, which is a lawyer's way of saying, nobody really has any idea of what's going to happen, but it's very clear that we're going in the direction of emails and now social media, and on this last thing, you know, if you're answering someone and it's a private discussion, well then, someone says, well, I want to see all your Facebook posts or whatever, and then you start getting into a situation where you have to reveal, you know, these other people, so it's just better to stay off of those if you can, or just understand that there's some risk.
Or direct.
I know it's tempting, especially with, I know you guys, I know board members get tagged, like, someone will ask a question and then kind of put you guys on blast, like, they'll, you know, they'll tag you guys and if you feel like you're on the spot, so I understand all that, I just, you know, there's some, some risk when, at least when there's multiple people commenting, just want to let you guys know that.
We do have Parks, of course, I wrote on my notes somewhere, there's Touch Truck, October fifth, so if you know anyone who has a cool truck that wants to be in that event, you can let Sean know. Also, Miracle League is going to have a Culvers Night at Culvers on Sunday, September eighth, from two until eight, so hopefully you can, you know, you have the opportunity to support Miracle League there, and then the next Parks meeting is September nineteenth at six thirty.
When is it called, does it?
September eighth.
All right.
One of our future agenda items, we're planning to put it in October, is start the master plan process to at least come up with a plan and unsure implementation, you know, timeline for the West Lawn Parks, and think about that in the context of all the other things that play around it, so we're planning to invite residents to that, and it'll probably be the October meeting since budgets next month.
Are you going to do a poll code question?
We could, we could probably come up with a poll code question, so that's all for Parks. Facebook survey.
Now we move on to item nine, reports from village officers, John had the school construction update, new school.
Okay, in the interest of time, we've got thirteen slides here, Fendorf put on a presentation for the facility advisory committee, school board, and then Winona Grove Education Foundation on August sixth, they discussed the schedule, so renovations basically are going to occur for the next three summers, it's basically windows, HVAC, any roof repairs, you know, maintenance projects, so please, please destruct this in the summer months, they'll collect the bids during the school year, new elementary school, we talked about that, design is underway, bidding and planning is going to occur November through April twenty twenty, with construction occurring April twenty twenty through August twenty-one, with an opening in the fall twenty twenty-one school year. They have, as part of the packet, there's first floor and second floor of the new elementary school, it's basically going to be three wings, one of the wings is going to be primarily for storage and like your HVAC and the utilities, you've got library and learning center, you have a gymnasium, and then you have three wings for the different grades of the school district there, three through five. There was some security concerns addressed at the high school, primarily at doors, and those were addressed here this past year, and they're also going to update the weight room, which is basically a classroom on the second floor of the high school that's been converted into a weight room, so they're going to put some money into that. Glacial drumlin, primarily because it is a relatively new school, focus around that common area right when you walk in, and expanding the food services because of the huge bottleneck, I think the kids were eating anywhere between ten thirty and one fifteen, so it was the main focus there. Cottage Grove School is one of the older schools in the district, so there are some upgrades to some classrooms, some windows, they are adding expanded food service cafeteria option, as well as, I mean, those that have been here a while know that they changed the entrance a couple of years ago, so they're going to have some sort of canopy or oning coming out the new main entrance, which is obviously now a secured entrance.
Yeah.
And then, Winnequa, being the oldest school in the district, had some major renovations, the biggest thing was a secured entrance, but there are some upgrades throughout. One thing, one item of note with Winnequa is they've had some, this past spring, some drainage issues, and what they found is they're actually below the, whatever you call it, the water table, three to eight inches, seeps into the mechanical room downstairs, and if it gets high enough, it'll get into the bathroom, so they're working through that right now, they have not addressed that, because they want to make sure that they actually have the final solution. Taylor Prairie, the renovations consist around basically lowering everything, because it's no longer an elementary school, it's K four through K, so all the sinks, the bubblers, the toilets, things of that nature. High school athletics are going to be a little bit further out, they're basically looking at redoing the track, and the football surface are the primary projects. MG twenty-one, there was a tour, because the meeting started off late and the presentation went long, I didn't take it, but actually MG twenty-one has a secured entrance now, and for those that weren't aware, they're actually looking to expand that into the middle school age six through eight this year, the goal was to have thirty kids, and I think last, at the presentation, they were at twenty-eight or twenty-nine, so talking to a lot of the teachers and the faculty, they thought it was going to be a good thing for those kids there, and that's really it.
All right, thanks, John. Melissa, I think, and Heidi, you guys attended the Sustainable Leaders Collaboration downtown with the mayor, as well as county exec, and Melissa was kind enough to attach the agenda and...
Yeah, and Heidi, jump in, because I think you took more notes than I did, but basically, it was just pretty much somebody from every community in Dane County, it seemed like, was there, whether it was trustees, or council members, or mayors, or staff, and it presented about, Madison presented about how they've, they're doing hybrid police cars and changed to their EMS and fire to anti, or maybe just EMS, anti-idling, and you can retrofit vehicles, biodiesel fuel in vehicles now, which is easy to do apparently, and we, let's see, I think it's Greg Frutiger from Deerfield, he was, that, I think that's who, he was there and he indicated that they had a resident that lived in Deerfield, then went to California for a couple of years, and then came back and has been installing solar on their village buildings, and so that's a local resource, we might like to just contact to see what he can do. I think it, there is a couple of different work groups, I think there's four separate work groups that we could sign up for, so that can go more in-depth than some others, and I think I signed up for the sustainability policy programs one, just to get more information on what we can do as a community. And I'm interested to see where it goes going forward, because it's, Amanda Peterson, who's a trustee in Oregon, said that her community wants to do it, but they don't have money to do it, and other communities were like, well, we don't have money either, but there's all sorts of different grants and programs to be a part of, so that you don't have to pay for the high cost of it, so Middleton and Madison were very eager to share their, what they've done in the past, so.
Yeah, they've sent around, like Melissa said, the signup sheets for four work groups, that'll be under the umbrella, those they plan on meeting, I believe, quarterly, and then they want to get all of the leaders together, maybe in six months, to see what comes from the work groups, so I thought there was some really exciting, you know, obviously there's some really big things that they're trying to do, but also little things, and it all adds up, and can save money, and I think when everybody works together, the ideas just kind of compound, so, yeah.
A couple of comments, one being, that wouldn't be very difficult to incorporate into what we're already doing, is when we're looking at potential incentive package for a business, if they, if their, if the business is interested in doing, it's called LEED standard, leadership in engineering, energy and engineering design, and actually Summit, I believe, was a plat, platinum certified, there's different levels, platinum, gold, silver, it would be cost, it's pretty expensive, so I don't think we'd want to make it a requirement, but if there's someone that's interested in, we could maybe incentivize that, it usually means that the building's going to be worth more as well, so the payback is there for the, for the village. And then, secondly, about ten or eleven years ago, former President Wienbeck established an ad hoc sustainability committee, but didn't gain much traction, because there weren't many people on, on the board or committees that were passionate about it, but it seems like there's a few on the board now, so if that's something that the board is interested in kind of creating that temporary committee to look into these things, that's something that could happen, too.
Yeah, it didn't make our top priorities, I know that, because I threw it in there, but I think there's some things we're already working on that we just need to highlight, and, and just continue going down that road. Little things that we do, even, or to very big things, like potentially putting solar on this building, or this building, or both, and getting that into plans, I think they would do it to little things, like we're looking at, you know, how we distribute salt in the winter, and reducing that at the public works perspective. The things we do around trees, and the number of trees we plant every year, we work with, whether it's the kids in schools, or the lions, or whatever else, there's a number of things where we, I think we can hang our hat a little bit, but we can certainly do a lot more, and I think this is a great forum for us to gain some ideas from other communities, as well as to kind of tell our little, small victories that we do.
And that's another thing, too, that came up, is Summit was brought up for their solar charging stations, so Cottage Grove got a little shout out at it, so.
Not by us, by someone else.
No, yeah, it was random, it was nice.
You guys planned that, yeah.
But there were, I mean, I think the anti-idle for emergency vehicles was something that I thought was really interesting, because they said, you know, it's not producing all the, you know, carbon dioxide from idling, but it's also better, the EMS staff like it, too, because they're not breathing all of that in as they're standing there, so it, you know, there's so many benefits to different things, so I'm interested to see where I'll go, and I'll continue to report when I meet on a, on one of the work groups, and certainly invite staff that may want to attend also.
So, the anti-idling came up at EMS?
Yeah.
Because Christie Williams had just gone, and the question was asked, and chief said that they have anti-idling on their trucks and they turned it off, because they don't want their trucks to not restart. So, it was interesting that it was, that he'd made it a point to have them turned off, I'm not sure what law enforcement does for idling, but it was just interesting.
Yeah, is there, like, is that something, like, they're afraid that it won't start? Like, I haven't had that issue.
I guess it happened to him and assistant chief when they went to the bank, right? And look, and I need to confirm my story, that's my understanding, that it wouldn't start back up.
It has to do with diesel, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, diesel, especially in the...
Well, it'll be interesting, get, get part of the work group, so we can see how other communities tackled those kinds of situations, yeah.
I would be interested in ad hoc sustainability committee, because they just, they said to, 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 to put together a list on what your community has done already, and you'll probably be surprised how much you have done, and then you can see where you'd like to go from there as well, and then you can survey the residents on their preferences, on how much further to go, or what you can do that they're interested in.
Okay, we can definitely kick that one around. Lee?
I think I've covered all of the legal issues, and we do have a closed session, so I'll just pass it over.
All right, passed down, communication, Miss Lenny, yes, business, we have first consider of approval vouchers. I have one question, and...
On page two, it's Axley, it's got personnel matters for nineteen hundred and fifty dollars. Do you recall, pick up your head, what that is for?
I mean, I can't really...
Oh.
Saying what?
Is that just like...
Fair, fair.
For labor.
Labor duties.
Okay, thanks.
It was Police Department, all right.
I had a question on page seven, the revolution in cheer and tumbling, it's over eight thousand dollars, I'm assuming that's a reimbursement where the, those that are cheering and tumbling are, were essentially, you know, kicking that over, is that right, or is that something else?
It's the instructors for the cheer team and the classes that are held there quite early, and it's for quite a lot of time, I think, I don't know how long they made it, but for Sean, I did say that.
But then they're, the folks participating then pay a fee to participate, and then it comes back in?
Yes, yes, yes.
That's all I wanted to confirm, I thought that was the case, I just saw eight thousand, I'm like, ooh.
Yep.
I made a motion to approve the invoices totaling four hundred sixty-four thousand, five hundred fifty-six dollars, seventy-five cents. Inclusive enough for my...
Inclusive enough for me, as long as you got a second, so you're good. Any further discussion? Having heard then, all those are paper?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We have Stan Mush, Carrie's correspondence, I think we hit that with all of the folks. We had a few emails, actually, those people showed up for the West Estates, West Lawn Estates fifth edition, so I forwarded those that went to actually the board to Lisa, so they can be included. We did have a plug for the rugby clubhouse from Chamber, again, forward that to Lisa, so we can include that. Melissa reminded me to make sure I give a shout out for, for the Chamber, who certainly believes strongly in the clubhouse, so. And I think everybody agreed here as well. So that's what I have for correspondence, I don't think you have anything else, okay. Upcoming community events?
Oakstone has a ribbon cutting on September tenth at noon, and I bring that up because at PB Jack's, we have four trustees in use of precedent, so we might wanna put out possible forms for future ribbon cutting as we try to work a little closer with the Chamber and they get us notification.
John, did you say September tenth?
September tenth at noon is what I have.
Yeah, I think they're planning it up next, actually, the week before, right? If they can, so they can get fall leaves going and everything, and then...
Yep.
Work out the kinks, and then have a, have the ribbon cutting after that. Anything else? Maybe the Cub Scouts coming up, with their big...
You have to be part of the Cub Scouts to go to camp out?
I think they're all welcoming.
Those just are, you don't wanna get involved in that in Western Quimtry.
I don't want to, you're right. Just a question.
Anything else? Move on to future agenda items?
Matt, I noticed that the new equalized value numbers came out. Those were the official ones, because they were like preliminary, right?
Yeah, they're official now.
They're official now?
Yeah, they give them to us, and then you have usually less than a week to respond, just in case there's something that jumps out as abnormal. So Deb and I look at it, Ellers reviews it, and there, there's usually not any surprises there, so. So then, if you don't respond, then they get certified.
So is that taking us closer to falling out of the regulated window of our assessed value?
Theoretically, so they went up by, I think it was six percent.
Six and seven, depending on which one it was.
Six or seven percent, depending on the category. Our assessed values don't get factored in until October or early November. So, you know, there's no guarantee, but those have generally been more inflationary, so probably two to two and a half percent. So I would assume that the figures would get further, the percent, the ratio percentage would get further apart.
Yeah.
We're already out of compliance, right?
One year compliance.
For what?
Out of compliance, but within the timeframe to come back within compliance.
Do you think that we might be able to ask the assessor, maybe after we get our numbers? And I know that's like, maybe not future agenda item like next meeting, but future agenda item like, yeah. Down the line. When is, when is the assessor going to come for the budget? Or is he...
I mean, only if he's invited, but it sounds like that's what you're, I mean, they've come, they've come the last three years, I think, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Certainly.
Yeah, it's like, asking them some questions about reevaluation.
To the workshop, you, you want workshop or prior to that?
I don't know what...
You're gonna be covering the workshop, the budgeting process.
Sorry, the workshop?
Yeah, I mean, do we, what am I covering?
It fits the most with the discussion, as I've kind of mentioned the last couple of budgets. And I'm guessing, it's gonna be real difficult to fit an expenditure of that level, all of a sudden, we're just gonna fit it in the budget, so I don't think that's gonna happen. So our, our reserves are healthy enough, where whenever the board wants to move forward with this, that we would use cash. So, and, and then from, from after that, start planning to make sure that, you know, every, every year, we're putting money aside until, you know, every fourth year, or however we wanna do it, it's kind of covered by saving up for it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, do you think that, would you recommend we wait until later to have them come?
It doesn't, it could be done any, anytime, but I think during budget discussions, that probably makes most sense, so October is...
I mean, I think we might as well just have them come here, so we can all ask questions, yeah.
Any other future agenda items, other than the usual...
So is that for next meeting, is that way?
No, we're...
No, I'm bringing it up in general.
But October unfortunately will be here before we know it.
Our financial management plan, which is a five-year plan, is currently a four-year plan, so annually, we update that. And the, we should have the draft ready by the end of this week. We'll get it out to everyone, but the finance committee is gonna be taking a look at that on Monday. And then it would come to the board September sixteenth, so there's a lot of time to review it. And if you want to, you know, if you're not able to make the finance meeting, and you wanna discuss, discuss it with me, we can, I'll send out an email of kind of my availability in the next couple of weeks, and if you wanna schedule something with me, that would work out just fine. So that will be on the next board agenda.
Jeff, are you meeting Peer Court on Thursday this week?
I don't believe it's...
Oh, that's not Peer Court Committee, that's, that's, I forgot it, I was like, what?
Yeah, yeah, shaking his boots for a second, what?
What?
I'm thinking, no, we just, we just met.
Are you wake over there?
We just met.
The open house for comprehensive plans, yeah.
He's been at this one, this one's here.
Wednesday, six thirty to eight, it's just a drop-in, no one's expected to be there the whole time.
Oh, yeah, that's not on...
We did post a possible quorum, so you're all welcome to show up.
Covered. Alright, if there's nothing else, then we'll move into item eleven, which is a closed session. The village, make a motion for the village to move, enter a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen point eight five, print one, print E, building or negotiating the purchase of public properties, investing in public funds, or conducting significant public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require, a closed session. This closed session is for negotiations in tid number five, is there a second?
A second.
Motion second, we'll do a roll call vote.
Allen?
Aye.
Limburg?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Radcliffe?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Valencia?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye. We are in closed session.